Good evening. Welcome to the City of West Miami. Today is Wednesday, July the 18th, 2018. What a coincidence. It's a little bit after 7:30. For the invocation, Ms. Aguilar, please rise.
Thank you, please rise. Lord, we pray for leadership. We pray for those who are ill. We pray for peace. And we pray for all the families in the City of West Miami. We pray for our military, men and women who are protecting our boundaries, our law enforcement officers, and our firefighters. And especially during the month of August, as our kids get ready to go back to school, we pray for a safe, healthy, prosperous, and educational beginning of school year. And we ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Chief, for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Mayor Eduardo Mujina.
Present.
Vice Mayor Rhonda Rodriguez.
Present.
Commissioner Candida Blanca.
Yes.
Commissioner Juan Blanes. Commissioner Luciana Suarez is excused this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, at this time, I would like to take item 11A out of order and so on.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item 11A is a presentation of certificates of recognition to the sponsors of the Fourth of July 2018 event by Mayor and City Commission. And on that note, we would like to reintroduce the sponsors, those ones who made the event a memorable event. I have the list here somewhere. Okay. The sponsors were Baptist Health South Florida, the Honorable Rebecca Sosa, District 6 Commissioner from Miami-Dade County, the State Companies, Inter-American Bank, Public Supermarkets, Intercontinental Bank, InterCredit Bank, Florida Education Institute, and master host Greater Miami Caters.
Can we come forward and...
Yes, Mr. Mayor. And we have here Mrs. Pacheco from Inter-American Bank to receive the certificate.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, it should be noted for the record that Inter-American Bank always says present for present to all the requests made by the city. Their partnership is very valuable, priceless, and it's wonderful to have such a professional group of people as part of our team here in the City of West Miami.
And tonight, we have here Mrs. Pacheco from Inter-American Bank. And we're grateful that year after year, you will always be present. So we wanted to recognize you with this certificate for Inter-American Bank, the Mayor and the City Commission of the City of West Miami, recognize sponsorship for the Fourth of July event 2018. And hereby extend my gratitude to the imperium and all the support and rule of the quality of the event dated this 18th of July 2018. On behalf of myself, the Mayor, Vice Mayor Rodriguez, the Commissioner, I hope Candida Blanca, Luciana Suarez, and of course Juan Blanes. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to say something. It's important to know that the residents, that Inter-American has branches in many different municipalities, and how proud we are and how grateful we are that they are in our community and that they always support us, even though they do have very little branches in the communities that they always support us. So it's important to acknowledge. It's our pleasure.
But I especially like the one of West Miami.
Oh, especially like the one of West Miami. We got to be your best one, right? Yeah, yeah. That's the best state you've ever... No, I think you're right. For all the residents of West Miami, it's a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, we have some other old certificates for those who sponsored the event, and we're going to send them at your discretion. Either we send it by mail, or if you want to, we can postpone it until the meeting of August 15th, which is the next meeting that we have regularly scheduled.
Why do you contact them?
We send reminders. Okay.
With that, Madam Clerk, is there any item that we should take out of order, or shall we follow the original order of the agenda?
Just, Mr. Mayor, a recommendation, since we are in the presentation mode, and I understand they could not be here. We have item B, which is a presentation of certificates of recognition to West Miami oldest living residents, Shirley Bader and Selma Beckham. And also, we have another resident who has been a resident of our city since 1948. We have also Joyce Shapiro, and we prepared a certificate too for her if you would like to present it to her too. They could not be here, but Mr. Blanes, Commissioner Blanes, would you like to...
Mr. Harrison. What happened to Mr. Harrison?
That one, I don't... I have those three provided by the assistant to the manager.
I thought we were going to get Mr. Harrison. Mr. Harrison's been here also...
Well, we can contact, yes, of course. Why not? We can, of course, recognize those that have been in our city, I mean, for a long time, and are founding fathers and mothers of our city. So... And I'm sure names will pop up as you start presenting these certificates. Neighbors talk to each other, and it may, you know, maybe a good tool for us to help spread the word about what the Mayor Commission, under your request for these certificates.
So hopefully, years from now, you and I will come over here and we'll be presenting a plaque for our wonderful work.
Maybe we'll have prices back.
This can be an ongoing, an ongoing event, because it's really nice, and we should continue it.
Yeah, I think we should add Mr. Harrison.
Okay, but basically, I think they should be present to be...
Yes, they could not, and we were in contact with them today, and one of them suggested if we can, I mean, could take the certificate to their residence, since they had impediments in, I mean, coming, especially at night, to a meeting. So it'll be entirely up to your discretion if you would like to...
Well, based on that information, I was not privy to that information, so based on that information, if we can make arrangements, that would be good.
Can I ask the attorney?
Yes.
Mr. Attorney, is that okay if we all go to a residence house to present this plaque, if we're all there together? Is that acceptable?
That's a very tricky issue. We're supposed to have our meetings here.
It's not a meeting, though.
It doesn't really matter. I mean, whatever, whenever meetings or commissioners gather together at any place, you're going to raise a question mark in the minds of people.
So we can't go to the Fourth of July anymore, or the lighting of the...
You can go out to the Fourth of July and so on and so forth. Please don't take it... Listen, you ask me a question, I respond to the best of my ability. Don't pull rabbits out of a hat, because that is a different story. That's a general issue that the city has been going out throughout the years, but you're talking about, as I understand it, to go to a particular place?
To a home. The home, the residence that are too frail to come to accept the recognition, that they can't come, like the ones we have.
Given the fact that they are the oldest living residents of our city.
Is there anything in particular that you're going to vote for over there?
No, sir. Just present.
All you have to do is just go ahead and announce it. What is it that your purpose is going to be, and just go. But is it, should it be made a practice out of that? The answer is absolutely not, okay?
Okay, so...
Exceptionally, just go ahead and do it, and specifically express what if, what is it that you want to do it for, okay?
Okay, how about, I have a suggestion. I have a suggestion, so let's not complicate things. In the past, I mean, in the past, we had birthdays, we had celebrations. As a matter of fact, I remember there was a gentleman that turned 100 years old, and we presented, actually, I presented the plaque. My suggestion is, one of us should go. I mean, in this case, you know, if it happened to be Commissioner Blanes' idea, you know, I think you should go. Whoever comes up with the name of the particular resident, maybe that will be the person that... And that way, that will be a single person going.
Be sure, be sure that if you all go, okay, be sure to make it for the record that it's just for this purpose and for no other purpose, okay?
Right. No, but here's what I'm... Okay, remember, you used the word "practice," establishing a premise, establish and, you know, so I'm kind of paying attention to what you're saying. So if a single person goes, I mean, we don't have to deal with sunshine law, we don't have to deal with any of those things. And my suggestion, I mean, unless you think otherwise, let's say, for instance, Commissioner Candid comes up with the name of somebody that she wants to recognize, she can go. And, you know, Commissioner Blanes, Vice Mayor, and so on, you know.
Let me ask you this, Mayor. Let me ask you this, I mean, because my memory might fail me. We have done this in the past for other people?
Not that I recall.
Not together.
Not together. Not together.
Okay, since I opened up Pandora's Box, let me close it. I opened it up, so let's close it. Mr. Attorney, I always take your guidance to heart. So based on what the attorney's saying, I say, let's keep it clean, let's only one of us go. And, Mr. Mayor, I like your suggestion, but I also believe that since you're the presiding chair, that this should, this should fall under your purview, that you, as our leader, would be the appropriate one to present these recognitions to the residents. And then if for some reason you can't, then you may appoint whomever. But let's keep it clean and go for...
Well, at this time, my suggestion...
By the way, I'd like to say something else. I mean, I don't do this because I just want to...
No, I understand.
Be the guy, the pebble in the shoe, okay? I'm doing this to protect you guys.
I understand.
Doing your job.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just thought of someone else that, I can't think of his name now, but he served with you on the planning and zoning.
Sergio Bonich.
No.
No, Malzer.
Ed Malzer.
Ed Malzer.
Malzer. He's another one that needs to be recognized. Ed.
I'll take that one.
Malzer, Harrison...
Joan Parker, Commissioner Candida Blanca's neighbor.
Joan, yeah. Joan's been here for a long time. So that's six.
So we have three more.
Yolanda and Candid. They've been here for a long time.
You guys don't qualify just...
No, you can't, you can't get a plaque until, you know, you're on the other side of the bench.
So we got six.
So why?
All right, let's move, let's move. Well, since we made it, okay, my decision is, in this case, this was brought up by Commissioner Blanes initially, so perhaps you want to take the lead in one of this, and then perhaps, Vice Mayor...
I agree with Commissioner Rodriguez. It's up to you, Mr. Mayor, and you assign, if you can go, you assign one of us, and that's it.
Yes, okay. Well, it has to be planned, so why do you, okay, why do we do that? You go ahead and contact me, when are they available, and so on, and then, you know, I guess we'll do it via, via the clerk's office, okay?
Okay, Mr. Mayor. We'll make the arrangements.
Okay, so that takes care of item A, B, and what else? B?
A and B.
A and B, A and B, okay, all right. So do you want to go back to the origin, the origin, ah, the original order of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so that will be item four, please.
Item four, presentation of minutes for approval for June 20th, 2018, regular commission meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes.
Presentation of minutes for July 11th, 2018, special commission meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Motion passes. Next item.
Item five, report of the City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Wednesday, on Tuesday of next week, I have scheduled a meeting with Mr. Juan Penna, my assistant, Cadi, and his assistant, Mercy, so that we can start working on the transition plan, because the time is here and now, for the brief designation of the acting City Manager on projects that there's a need for him to become involved with. As you will see or note in most of the emails that you have received from my office lately, Mr. Penna has been copied on just about every single piece of communication. There are matters pending. As you know, I will be available, no matter at what time or what day of the week it is, as you need me, when you need me. However, these matters that are pending will fall under the jurisdiction of the acting City Manager after July 30th. By the same token, and the same will apply to Mrs. Leon, who joins us here in the audience today, we are going to have a brief period of separation, effective July 30th, at the end of Business Day, through January 31st, 2019. So that being said, we should be back, God willing, on February 1st. It's bittersweet. It's actually kind of unreal that we're talking about this, but I guarantee you that the transition will be seamless. It will be one in the, where there's going to be a lot of harmonious working relationship, and the same is going to apply in the Accounting Department. Rita will take over as Acting Finance Director, and I would only hope that you follow the chain of command only for the greater good of the city, and that for your benefit, so that you can respond to your citizens. I think Juan would be the point of contact. My email will be active. However, I've sent out letters to all the municipal partners that we do business with, advising them of my, of our brief separation for a period of six months. That being said, as you know, one of the biggest issues that we have pending is the issue with FEMA. We have received, as of Monday of this week, we received the first reimbursement, which was a small amount, but $79,000 on one of the categories. There's a project management team that seems to be a little bit more responsive than the local FEMA representatives. We've been communicating with them, they've been asking questions on our project worksheets, and we have been communicating via email. There's no phone contact, because there is not a personal service, but I have a feeling that this company that is operating out of Orlando will probably help us get our message to the state FEMA office. I've also made contact to Ms. Lily Forbes, and this is so important, because this has to do with a credit line, where we're paying $3,000 a month of interest, and the renewal is coming up on September 28th. So believe it or not, you know, we're not only sitting here preparing for agendas, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes, a lot of projects that we have to track, and a lot of day-to-day that basically completes our meaning, the meaning of having a manager's office. So you've got personnel issues, you've got department issues, you have contractual issues. We have matters with the City Attorney's Office, so what we're trying to do is make it a very flawless transition, so that there's no interruption in the service that we provide to the residents. So I wanted to bring that to your attention and report on FEMA. I believe that we may have just found a little window of responsiveness. So we will continue to track this, and obviously, moving forward after July 30th, I'm sure that Juan will be communicating the same. For the next six months, God willing, I'll be sitting on that side of the chambers and just as a cheerleader and a supporter, and in the case that anything comes up that requires my attention, at least from my past service to the city, and hopefully, looking forward to my future service with the city. I thank you for an outstanding ride. Enough said.
Madam Manager, go ahead, Ms. Attorney, because I have a question.
We're not ready to report on that yet, but that's one of the things that we're... Okay. Mr. Villalobos has requested that I report on the cell towers. Crown Castle is one of the carriers that has a tower at one of our park facilities, and they are requesting that the city authorize them, basically, to improve and upgrade their communications, so that they can provide a better service to those companies that co-locate their service on that tower. It doesn't mean an expansion of the use of the land, simply that work will be done within the tower, within the structure, to accommodate and upgrade antennas and communication service. This request was sent to the City Attorney's Office, and it is pending Mr. Penna's return. I sent out a memo to the representative today at Crown Castle, and I advised her, because they're giving us a 30-day window of time to either approve it or deny it. However, in the absence of a commission meeting between now and August 15th, the 30-day window will have expired. That said, we need to track this, and I've communicated to them that we're asking for an additional 30 days to be able to get informed, and Mr. Penna will bring a recommendation after the City Attorney reviews the lease agreement, which I've provided a copy to Anari, so that she can give us a copy of the lease. So I don't know that there's anything other than those upgrades that are proposed, and they would like the consent of the city, and anything dealing with a contract or amending a portion of a lease that was approved by resolution will require action by the commission. So we are working diligently with Crown Castle, and like I said, all of the correspondents leaving my office for the last 30 days, whether it involves directly Public Works or not, is being copied to Mr. Penna, so that he can pick up the ball, so that there's no glitches during the next six months.
Okay, the reason for... Go ahead.
The reason for my insistence to bring it out to your attention is that pursuant to the original lease, it says that if we do not respond within 30 days, it's automatically renewed. Okay?
So renew for how long?
No, not renewed. They will consider, if the city doesn't take action, they will proceed, and they will assume that the city is in agreement with their request.
I take it back. I mean, I misspoke. It's not that it will be renewed, it just simply is that they would consider that it would be approved.
Okay, no, but for clarification's sake, I, we've been down this road before, and it is my understanding that when this contract comes to the table, that's the time to negotiate with them, whatever it is that we need to negotiate. Let's say we were not happy with payments, we were not happy with certain items, we're not happy with the terms of how long the contract, so this is the opportunity. So it's very important that, so you said that letter went out, saying to ask for an extension?
They are asking our permission to upgrade the tower, the infrastructure.
No, 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 that's not what I'm asking. Okay, did you send a letter out or an email?
I sent them an email today.
For an extension?
Yes. Requesting an additional 30 days.
Okay, so then between now and then, whenever you get together with Mr. Penna, because I know he's very familiar with all this, whatever...
And we have been working with Crown Castle. I don't know whether you have been by Cooper Park, and you may have seen the enhancement to the fence. The fence was in state of disrepair, so we contacted Merida, Merida or Meredith Bowens at Crown Castle. It's taken a long time, but they came up with some plans, and the conditions were set by our office, as far as what we wanted to see there, and they have come through very nicely. They're in the process now of developing a landscape plan to meet the needs of the park, so that they can complete an aesthetically pleasing project. So they do collaborate with the city, and I suspect that if Ms. Carreras, I believe is the lady that I sent the email to today, that they will grant us the additional 30 days.
Okay.
The wall looks very nice, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just, so I'd be unsure, this is only, we're only talking about enhancements or...
Communication.
On the tower, this has nothing to do with the renewal of the contract?
Correct.
Okay.
This has nothing to do with the lease renewal.
Okay, perfect.
It stipulates to a section of the lease, only for the purpose of reminding the city that no action by the city in this matter or in this project that they have pending will result in their assuming that the city is okay, and they're ready to move forward to accommodate their vendors whom they make money off of. I mean, that's a fact. They have other carriers that are co-habitating in that tower with them. So what they want to do is increase communications.
But they sit on our land, so that's why...
Exactly. So we're waiting for, hopefully, they'll give us the additional 30 days. That'll give everybody a chance to come to the table and see if there's anything that needs to be looked at or reviewed, as the mayor said, and Mr. Villalobos will, you know, definitely walk us through the legal process of that, and then you may see it on a commission agenda, either the 15th of August or early on in September.
Okay. Can we go back to FEMA and ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Because last time that we spoke, there's a couple of items that you mentioned. One, that perhaps we need to go to the bank and ask for an extension?
Yes.
Because apparently FEMA was denying paying a certain amount of money?
The big-ticket item, which is Category A, the debris removal.
Okay, how, okay, what's the story on that one?
The story on that is, until such time, we have a letter from FEMA denying reimbursement or de-obligating, which is what they call reimbursement of that specific project. The bank cannot do anything. The bank will be happy to renew our credit line for a period, a period of one year. There's not going to be a cost involved, but they have to substantiate the reason as to why this credit line is not being paid in full, as agreed by the city. We have not defaulted in any of the interest payments. We have not defaulted in any of the terms and conditions of the credit line, and that's why we have initiated a request to renew, so that we could be on the safe side. We know that this is not going to be closed by September 28th. I knew it would take long, but it's taking a lot longer than we anticipated.
Okay, but please give me, give me short answers, because I have a question. The question is...
The bank needs certain documents, Mr. Mayor.
No, 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 but it's not the bank. I'm not talking about the bank. I'm talking about, there was a money that it was in question, whether, and we said something about that we were going to challenge it?
Yes.
And what kind of guarantee do we have? This is what I always look, I mean, this is something that I have learned in business, and it's the following, you know, sometimes when you fight, you lose, you know, and usually attorneys win. I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney. But usually, that's the case.
They always win.
They always win, yeah. So anyway, you have to, we have to evaluate the risk factor versus the amount of money, because if we're going to extend the loan for another year, you know, how much is that going to cost?
$36,000 approximately.
$36,000.
Approximately.
Okay, and what's the amount in question that they're not paying?
$1.2 million.
No, 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 it's not, no. We were talking about 10%, if I remember correctly.
No, no, they're talking about de-obligating the entire $1.2 million.
That's the first time I hear about it.
No, I've reported this before.
I don't, I don't, I don't remember that.
When did this happen? Because this is news to me.
I remember...
Sir, I've reported this at previous commission meetings. It's on record, and I believe there is a memo to that effect.
I've been worried to the fact that we don't know when.
Right.
Right.
But not that they're not going to pay.
Okay, there's a local PDMG manager that we talked to, okay, and there is a memo that I have issued to this effect, and I can dig it up, obviously not right here, but I can. I can. They are looking to deny the FEMA claim that comes with a large category, the one for the debris removal. In our conversation with a local project manager, with Kevin and with the other gentleman's name is, his name escapes me. We have his name downstairs. He said that they were reviewing the category A project, which is the debris removal category. We submitted our truck certifications, the permit for the site, the environmental site, the EPS site that the vendor used to dump the debris pickup so it could be mulched. So not only did we comply with the site being approved by the county and by the state of Florida, the licenses, the trucks, all the payments made, all the canceled checks, FEMA is now alleging that we needed to have pictures of each and every truck.
I remember that.
Do you remember that I did talk about it?
That part I remember.
So that was part of the report. That was part of the report.
Right.
Now they're saying that they're going to de-obligate the entire amount of money because we don't have pictures of the truck. Obviously, this is based on a phone conference between Mercedes Leon, myself, and Mr. Penna and the FEMA representative. That is why I've, as per my verbal report this evening, as of today, we actually have a project management company that's attempting to resolve, I guess, all the projects that are being filed and track those and help us get through our reimbursement period. So I contacted a gentleman by the name of Gregory, I believe it's his name today, via email, and I got a response tonight. I asked them to please look at the category A projects, and I advised him that the last communication that we had with FEMA is that they would be de-obligating it, but no one has given us anything in writing. And until we have something in writing, we cannot appeal the decision of FEMA. We cannot go by word of mouth. We have nothing to prove that they are not going to reimburse us. However, our conversations have led us to believe that they're going to put our project on hold and not reimburse us because we don't have pictures of the truck, which by the way, during the initial meeting with all the local representatives from FEMA, where Mrs. Leon, Mr. Penna, and myself were present, no one told us or the city, and there's nothing in writing that says that we needed to have pictures of every truck, because the pictures tell the story of the loads. Yet, we have one employee assigned to each truck. Each truck is matched by a signed validation ticket from the city and one by the driver at the time of the disposal at EPS. So we have all the truck certifications. The truck met the FEMA requirements, and now they are hanging their hat on the fact that we didn't take pictures of the trucks, so they don't really know if the trucks were full. Well, the only way to validate that is the tickets have the yards that were dumped at the site, and we were billed by the yards from the site. So there is verification that these trucks were filled to capacity, and the tickets match the invoices. Now they want pictures of the trucks.
Okay. All that's...
It's complicated.
I know it's complicated. Okay. First of all, I'm going to apologize. I'm going to say that perhaps myself and members of the commission didn't hear the whole story of that report. Okay? My understanding, this is me personally, and I could be wrong. Okay? And bottom line, we just need to resolve it. My understanding, last time that this was reported to us, was that they were willing to pay, but because we didn't have the pictures, they were going to deduct 10%, and that 10% it was $120,000, and therefore, we were going to ask for an extension also. And I remember Commissioner Suarez saying something, let's not wait for anything, and you said, no, we have to wait for the actual letter. And he said, no, you know, contact Senator Rubio and Rebecca, you know, Commissioner Rebecca Sosa and so on. I remember that very clear. But the only thing that I remember is that it was 10%, which is $120,000. That's why, wait, wait, let me finish. That's why I questioned, because if the whole amount is in question, $1.2 million, there's no way we can pay. Let's say they decide not to pay. Let's play that scenario. They decide not to pay. We cannot pay this back in a year. So this is very serious in terms of negotiation with the bank or whatever, you know? And I remember we said, okay, we're going to challenge it. And then the question that I walked out of here with a question. I said, okay, let's take the, whatever, $1.2 million less, 120, extending the law is going to be $36,000. Okay? So yeah, we're going to get hit by whatever, $80,000, $90,000 or something like that. I mean, that's how I walked out of the meeting.
Sure.
But I don't remember, and I know it could be confusing, because I know that we sit over here every two weeks, but you do this every day. And sometimes the story is like, you know, you fight with a person. It's like the story, you know, the guy that went to drain the swamp, and then he forgot. He was killing alligator for so long that he forgot that he was there to drain the swamp, you know? So anyway, what I'm getting at is, this is serious.
Very serious.
This is very serious, and this is the first time that I understand it. I don't...
And this conversation took place very recently, because initially, they were willing to pay 90%, and we would take the 10%.
Okay. So then that's my story.
That's the initial position of the city.
Right.
Then we got a message through the grants portal, which is the application by which the city uploads all the FEMA information, and we asked Kevin Martin, which is our representative, to speak to the person who was pretty much over him overseeing the projects and sending them to the state. That's when Mr. Penna, Mrs. Leon, and I held a conference call, and that was several weeks, a couple of weeks ago, maybe? Lully? Couple of weeks. So since then, we actually have a company that is working to mitigate, if you would, all these outstanding reimbursement amounts, and they have been contacting us, and we've been supplying them with information as their questions come up. As a matter of fact, just yesterday, we sent them some clarifications on one of the categories, and they said they were wrong and we were right. So this company looks like they're serious enough that they're going to look into our emails. So I wrote the gentleman an email today saying, this is our situation. We had a telephone conversation. We've been advised verbally, but we have not received anything in writing, and we cannot continue to burden the taxpayers, because at the end of the day, the taxpayers are paying the interest rate on the credit line. And I think at the end of the day, this will be resolved, Mr. Mayor, but it's going to take time. It's going to take more time than anticipated. And that's why I reported earlier that I had placed a call to the emergency manager representative assigned to our storm at the state level, Mrs. Lily Forbes. I've called her several times. I've left messages. So I initiated this email to the company, and I just, I was reviewing my emails before the meeting started, and the gentleman responded by saying, yes, he did, by saying that they had reached out already to DEM, which is the Department of Emergency Management at the state, to get their side of the story, and hopefully they will bring a resolution. So at least we have now somebody who's responding. We couldn't even get a response before.
But okay, who's this third party?
They're a company hired by the Department of Emergency Management to mitigate all the FEMA reimbursements.
Okay, but that doesn't come out of our pocket. That's...
No, they're paying for that. That's, but listen, at least somebody is responding. We have no other way of addressing the FEMA representatives. It's very frustrating unless you go to the portal and you write in a comment, and you got to sit back and wait until someone calls you. It's very frustrating, Mr. Mayor.
No doubt, and I have no doubt that you're doing the best you can. All I'm saying is, to me, this is, at least to me, this is brand-new information that they were taking this position. That's all I'm saying. And then if that's the position, then we need to be even more, I mean, because we can't pay $1.2 million back in a year.
Right. And believe it or not, I just got a text message from Mr. Penna, and I'll read it on the record. And the offer was for them, the offer to settle, they basically made us an offer to settle with that 10% benchmark that you're using.
That's what I remember.
Was to settle for $990,000, and forget the difference, if we didn't accept that offer, then the whole amount would be obligated, and then we would be asked to proceed with an appeal process, which is the same thing I'm telling you. But obviously, now, we have an entire project that is being reviewed for de-obligation. So what their position is going to be at the end of the day, no one knows. No one has given us in writing, and Mrs. Leon is sitting in the audience, and she and I have been working hand-in-hand with Mr. Penna on inputting all these projects, on talking to the FEMA representatives, and there has been absolutely no written engagement as to the position of FEMA on our storm.
Okay. Commissioner Vlan?
Looking at this historically in the past, I know that we had an issue with another storm, another hurricane, because we use a company that had these trucks that weren't certified.
They were certified. They lost the certifications.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, they didn't have the certification, and we got hit for that, right?
No.
We didn't?
No. After 10 years of audits, it was for Hurricane Wilma and Katrina, about 10 or 12 different representatives that came back and audited and re-audited and audited. The storms were closed, and we got paid what we were due, I believe. One of the projects...
How long did it take?
$52,000 that we had to pay back on Irma, I mean, on Katrina, I believe.
And it took how long?
Right. 10 years.
10 years. So 10 years.
And no, they did have the certifications, so that assumption is incorrect.
You know, they took that position, and you know, I mean, it's like they didn't have certification, just like they're taking the position that they need the pictures, and without the pictures, what are we going to do? It could be another 10 years. I don't know. I mean, you know, they say they're going to de-obligate.
We're doing everything in our power to...
I know you are. I know you are, but you know, me sitting here, you know, I'm not assured at all, at all.
I know.
At all.
Nobody is.
Nobody is, and nobody explained.
And not just that, but you know, you have to take into consideration the fact that we could have another storm.
Yes, sir.
That we could have, that's a possibility, and that we could have the same situation. And then what do we do?
See, keep fighting.
Oh, no. I mean, we're going to get through it, but it's just going to be very, very difficult.
There was a period of time, I don't know, I mean, most of you have been in the commission for a long time. I don't remember her name, but there was a blonde lady that used to, that actually took possession of the conference room for like a year, a year, a FEMA-hired independent contractor.
Paid.
Paid by FEMA to sit here and review both storms. I remember that Commissioner Suarez got to know her on a first-name basis, and he would bring her a refreshment, a Coca-Cola every day, because she basically set up shop here, and this became her full-time job.
I do remember that.
And I got to tell you...
I do remember that.
Do you remember that, Mayor?
Of course I remember that.
And I got to tell you something. These FEMA representatives usually cloud the process, and I'll tell them to their face. You know me, I'm very black and white. They cloud the process, because the longer they keep the project open, the longer they have employment by FEMA. These people are subcontractors. They don't have employment that is stable, that they don't have the longevity. They are brought in every time there's a storm.
That doesn't give us much hope with that company that you're mentioning about.
Well, the new company is very responsive. I got to tell you, the people from Orlando...
They're the same boat that that lady is.
Well, maybe...
The longer they're at it, the more money they're going to get, so...
Well, they're going to get paid a lot of money, but it's the only mechanism that has opened up for us to communicate with someone. And I will be happy to share their email address, and if you all want to write them on behalf of the city, by all means.
I'm sorry. I have to object to this.
Okay.
Because you cannot do that.
That's right. That's an administrative function, but it's very frustrating, and I apologize, Mr. Villalobos. I didn't mean to...
Well, in the same, okay, and I know there's certain protocols, and I know there's certain things, and we know how, you know, our senator acts, and you know, our city commissioner, I mean, not city, county commissioner, but and so on, but let me tell you, I kind of agree with Commissioner Suarez, you know, reach out to them, you know, ring the bell, you know.
We can, Mr. Mayor, because they're going to say, show me where.
But at least, at least when you come up with a paper, they already know about it, you know, just, you know?
We'll be happy to issue a letter, but...
Whenever our senator comes to pay the water bill, you talk to them, you know, about the FEMA, you know, the same way.
I will reach out to them, but I know that they're going to want some justification or paperwork so that they or have their staff look into it on our behalf.
Yeah, but if we go to them later on, then they're going to say, oh, this is the first time I hear about it. At least, you know...
Well, I'll tell you, our US senator has publicly gone on record to say that FEMA has a huge bureaucracy with this process, and that they're not being, as responsive as they should be to cities and entities that they are supposed to assist. So I promise you that I will keep a very close eye on this, and moving forward, I know that Mr. Penna and Rita will work diligently to try and get some solutions. For some reason, I have a feeling this company that we're riding is a little bit more responsive than everyone else that has been assigned.
Quick question before we wrap it up. Are we the only municipality that did not know about the pictures? Or are there others?
I don't know. What they did with their briefing, I can tell you, because it was not only my office represented at that meeting. There were six or seven representatives from different areas to include their mitigation team. There's not one, there was not one mention, and Mercedes was there.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Right. So that leads to my...
They couldn't point us to where it was written that we needed pictures of the loaded trucks.
I'm just very curious if we're the only one that's been affected this way by that.
And mind you, Mr. Quintana, I asked him to go out and take video of the debris process, and there is a video on file. They don't care to see that. They want pictures of each truck.
So if you can, through, during your investigation of this situation, if you could just get that, see if you can get that answer for me, if we're the only ones being affected in that respect?
I will. I will. I'll reach out to other managers and see what they're going through, their pains with FEMA. But I have a feeling that there's such bureaucracy there that, and people want to drag this out, because obviously, that's gainful employment for them.
No, agreed, agreed. I'm just curious about that one particular aspect, the pictures.
So that's one of the things I don't want to lose my eyesight, because it's huge.
Okay.
So Madam Manager, well, in this case, that will be Mr. Penna, but we should get a report on this at every meeting, I mean, see what's going on.
I will ask the clerk to put it, Mr. Mayor, a report from the office of the acting city manager at the next commission meeting and moving forward on the status of FEMA, if there's some...
It doesn't have to be complicated. It's just a report. Where are we at?
Sure. I will convey that in a transition meeting.
Because I know it takes manpower, and it takes all of that, you know, you've got a lot of things to do.
This is very time-consuming. And I have to tell you that we're probably the only city that is not, has not submitted reimbursement for our direct administrative expenses. Our time in this... Our time in this, when everybody was partying during the holidays on December 31st and December 24th, we were here uploading all those tickets. So other people hire a company and turn over the baby and say, "We're gonna pay you for this, because FEMA will reimburse you for that, and you take care of everything for us." But in order to be efficient, to expedite our reimbursement, to be more productive, we took it upon ourselves, and we uploaded every single debris ticket, and there were hundreds of them. Every single requisition, every single ticket. Now they're questioning the trees that we had to replant along 62nd Avenue. They're questioning the contract between the city and Mr. Higgins Landscaping, and we have supplied FEMA with that information 10, 12 times. And it's the same explanation over and over and over again.
Okay, we, we need to move forward. Next item?
Item six, report of the city attorney.
There's no report by the city attorney.
Thank you. Next item?
Item seven, report of the city engineers, none this evening. Item eight, committee reports, report of the mayor.
Personally, I have no report. Anybody else?
No. Mr. Mayor, may I remind you of something that you may wanna report on?
Okay.
We have an August 15th tentative date, we...
Oh, that's right.
For the FPL Hurricane Prepartness Workshop at 6:00 PM.
Better late than never. Anyway, okay.
And, and for the record, you have been trying since February 2018 to get on the calendar to have a town meeting for storm preparation.
Yeah.
At what time, at 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock.
Okay.
That's just for the mayor, correct?
No.
No, this is for everybody.
For all of us?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, it's requesting from the, whatever they call, vegetation department, whatever they, they call themselves, FPL, to talk to our residents to preventive measure, you know, make them aware that they can call in, and they can trim the alleyway in preparation for future storms, and not to let everything overgrow and that type of thing, but... So they will hear from FPL and their vegetation company.
So August 15th, 6:00 PM?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for reminding me of that.
Yes, we will send a calendar. I know that Gotti sent a calendar, Mayor, because she's initially trying to coordinate between your office, FPL, the vegetation team. Just for your knowledge, we had some pamphlets that were very informative that we have included in all the welcome packets, so that new buyers are, are informed, and in the event that they're gonna do some trimming in their properties, they are aware of what they need to do.
Okay. Thank you. Next item?
Item nine, cities and presentation.
Anybody present a presentation?
No. No, Mr. Mayor's?
Uh-huh. Next item?
Item 10, unfinished business, none this evening. Next item would be item 11C. This is a discussion and recommendation in reference to setting time limitation after a building permit is issued for the commencement and completion of work. This item was postponed from the June 20th commission meeting, and this item is sponsored by Commissioner Blanes.
Okay. Commissioner Blanes?
You're the expert on this, so, does it sound good?
Well, this is, this is what I suggest. Anything that we do to better the city, yes, of course it sounds good. The only thing is, I mean, we could discuss it, but I'm a little hesitant discussing something, and that we don't...
Mr. Mayor, may I, please? And this comes, I mean, together with a request, because we had put on the agenda a first reading on this same discussion, so at this time, I would like respectfully to withdraw items D and F, which are first reading, and leaving only the discussion items, which are items 11C and E.
Okay, so you're saying we...
We're drawing item 11D and F.
And F, okay.
Just leaving the discussion items, which are 11C and E.
So we'll only, only discuss this, this is for the first time?
Okay, so let's...
We are gonna discuss this possible legislation.
Okay.
Idea about legislation. And, Mr. Attorney, can you add a little bit to this?
Well, I think that you all agree that they should be first discussed, then recommended. I would draft the ordinance, and that would be the second step, and the third step would be...
No, no, I know, I know, I know all of that. I'm, I'm saying, talking about the discussion, how this possible discussion, what we're gonna discuss here, how it could benefit the city.
Okay, let me, can, can I...
Legally.
Right, but let me, let me clarify something, let me clarify something. Let's, okay, let's take one item at a time, all right? Let's take this one in particular. Discussion and recommendation, setting time limitation after the building department issues for the commencement, completion of work. The way it's written is a little weird. Okay, are we talking, are we talking about...
After a building permit is issued, setting time limitation to commence the work.
Okay.
And, and actually, and, and completion of the work.
Okay, I had a discussion with, with Mr. Penna in, in this subject, and my understanding is this particular item, after you have a permit, it is already set on the books, and this is something that came from Day County. Let, let, let me, I'm, I'm an example-type of person. Let me, I like to explain things and show you an example, okay? The way I understand, and this is already set, is when they issue you a permit to do construction, in general, whatever, either an addition to a house, or a remodel, or, or a two-story, or whatever it is, even, even the buildings, okay? Once they issue that permit, you have to start within six months. It is already on the books, from what I understand, and that's something that I need, what, well, Mr. Penna needs to show it to us to make sure, because it could be like one of those that it's customary, like, like, I know it's on the books for Miami-Day County, and we kinda inherit the whole process from Miami-Day County. So what happened is, after you get a permit, within six months, you have to start construction. And then once you start construction, you need to call for inspection. Let, let's say you wait till the last minute, and you start construction six months. The next inspection has to be called in within six months.
Correct.
And people were getting very smart about it, and they were, they were, let's say they wanna postpone it because they didn't have the money, or whatever, and so what they did is they called for an inspection, and then they bought another six months. Well, what the county did was, no, you can't just call an inspection, you have to pass inspection. So actual work has to be done, and you have to pass inspection. If you fail inspection, then that permit is revoked. From what I understand, that is on the books. So, you know, writing an ordinance of something that is already there, maybe we can perhaps discuss some of the items that we're not happy with, and amend the ordinance that, that is already in the book. But I asked Mr. Penna, "Do we have this in the book?", and he says, "We do."
Okay.
So, so, but, our issue, I think, I think we're, we're all in agreement. I remember years ago, when the property where, right now, the library sits there, and the Cabrera Clinic, so I don't know if it's still Cabrera, it's there, sat there for years with a fence, empty property, the, the grass up to whatever, right on H Street, and it was an eyesore, okay? And it sat there forever and ever, okay? Finally, they, we approve a building, and then the building was done. And, you know, I'm not gonna mention all the properties, but perhaps that's what's happening. The, the other properties sit there, and nothing happens, and they get dilapidated, and, and on, and it's an eyesore to the neighbors. I'm sure that's what we're talking about, right?
That's what, that's what I had in mind, yes.
Okay, right. But once they get a permit, so in other words, this is not that, that ordinance. The, this ordinance is, once they get a permit, there's already things, the only thing we could do is, okay, well, instead of six months, it should be three months, or four months, or whatever, you know, you know, but that's, that's what I think. What I can suggest is, why don't we have Mr. Penna come back next time, talk to Mr. Attorney, to make sure that such ordinance, or such, this is written the way I'm, please take minutes, very clear, so, so, you know, so next time, when we, when Mr. Penna is present, you know, when we have the next meeting, that he brings this to the table, tell us what the parameters are, to see if we are in agreement. And, and do you have any other, yeah?
Agreed.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Commissioner Blanes, I believe I said this before when this came up, I love where you're going, where you're going with on this.
Yes.
I, I do, I support you on, on, on where you're going. And, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I, I, I agree with you to wait for Mr. Penna, simply because you keep saying, "It's my understanding." I respect, I respect your, your knowledge.
I haven't seen it in writing.
But I want, I don't wanna hear from you, I wanna hear from Mr. Penna.
Exactly.
So I respect, you know, your, your, your knowledge of it, and I, I love where you're going with it, and I'm in agreement with both of you, but I wanna hear from the expert.
No, no, no.
I wanna see it in writing.
Exactly.
I wanna see it in writing from Public Works.
Agreed.
So I, I think it's best for all of us if we do wait for Mr. Penna to come back and continue our discussion on both of these, but I like where you're going on it. I just want, I have questions, and I, I feel more comfortable directing my questions to the expert.
Because it's very simple, if it's not in writing, then anybody can challenge it. You know, you, you go over there, and you said, "Okay, that's it, your permit is revoked", and I said, "Okay, show me." So I agree.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna ask Mr. Penna to issue a memorandum with copy of the existing laws that we have, or ordinances that are on the books, okay? Highlighting where we have the time limitations for these issuances of building permit for your ready reference and consideration to amend if you wish to pursue that.
Okay.
So between now and the 15th of August, you're going to have a detailed memo on this.
Okay, let me, let me explain something to you. The building department is different from any other building department. What happened is the following. Day County is the umbrella, and you have many, many municipalities, and as a matter of fact, they have something called the Board Rules and Appeal, that I happen to serve in the Board Rules and Appeal, and what happened is, all, all the municipalities have to follow the model of the county. They can deviate from it, you know, but initially, they have to follow that model, and they can't deviate too much from it, you know, they, but, and, and if, let's say we wanna deviate from it, you know, it, not only, it's not as simple, Mr. Attorney, it's not as simple as writing an ordinance, or us vote on it. We have to make sure that we stay in communication with, with the, that department. It's called, it's not, it's called BORA, Board Rules and Appeal, but it's the, it's like, I forget the name. I'm sorry, I forget the name right now, but there's a department that kinda controls, you know, it's like the umbrella for the building departments in each municipality. Okay? Okay?
Now, Mr. Mayor, my understanding is that you're, what you're deferring right now is the discussion for next time, right?
No, no, we deferring, we're deferring the, the actual first reading.
No.
Then you cannot discuss it.
The discussion, Mr. Mayor.
No, it's just discussion.
Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me.
Okay.
You cannot discuss it, if you go defer, if the next meeting is going to be a first reading, then you cannot discuss it.
Okay, so I guess it's not gonna be a first reading till we hear from Mr. Penna, is that what it is?
May, may I share a little bit of...
I'm confused myself now.
And, and I think, I don't know if I can speak on this now, but I, I suggested something to our city clerk, which I think will keep us abreast of, of where the possible legislation is, because now we have, now we first are going to put it on the agenda just to discuss among us, to see if it's a good idea.
Well, I think it's a good idea right now.
And if it is, then we tell the attorney, "Mr. Attorney, draft the ordinance." But, but, if we are not sure, and we require further information, like from another city, now it, it doesn't go to him, it's still, it's, it's still on pause.
Discussion.
So, so I suggested to her...
He means under discussion.
I suggested to her that when, whenever we have a situation like that, to, to have it at, at phase one, or stage one, and keep it there, okay? So when you say, "Okay, where is it at?", "Okay, it's on stage one, uh, phase one", okay, so that means that it's just discussion, and if it hasn't moved, it's probably because something's pending. So we know that it has not gone to first reading, because it's at, at phase one. Phase two would be first reading, so if it's at phase two...
And at first, and at first reading, you don't discuss anymore?
Absolutely.
And then second reading, then it's published and discussion.
And phase three, after it passes first reading, now it's at the second reading. It was advertised, and we're gonna have it on the agenda, and we're gonna discuss it. So phase one, phase two, phase three. And now we know who's on first, who's on second, and who's on third, because the other day, I got really confused. I mean, I wrote an email demanding that, you know, this ordinance be put back on the, on the agenda, because I was under the impression that the previous, in the previous agenda, it was a first reading, and it was, and it was tabled, and I was upset about that, so, you know, the attorney even was a little bit confused about it. He wasn't sure where it was when I spoke to him. And, and I believe you were too, Mr. Mayor, and, and anybody would. So I think with the clerk's help in, you know, communicating to us where the possible legislation is, whether at phase one, phase two, or phase three, then we'll have an idea, "Okay, all right, we're at phase one. We're just discussing, and hopefully we'll go to phase two, first reading. And then phase three is second reading, where we're gonna discuss it." Does that make sense?
Mr. Commissioner, I do believe you're explaining exactly how we do it already. That is how we do it. We, we always discuss first.
Then is, well, no, 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 I'm talking about, because now we're adding an extra step.
Which one?
Discussion.
We've, we've always discussed first.
No, we haven't. It has come, it always comes from first reading.
Wait, wait, let me, let me, let me clarify this a minute, let me clarify this a minute.
Maybe I'm under misunderstanding.
It used to be that anybody could come and say, "Mr. Attorney, just go ahead and draft this ordinance", and I would draft an ordinance. And they created some confusion, because other commissioners would not like the ordinance, and would order another ordinance, and so we would have conflict in ordinance and so on and so forth. So the mayor suggested at some point that we should discuss amongst yourself, you should discuss among yourself, an idea about bringing out an ordinance. You would say, "Whatever", and then you would suggest to me, "Just go ahead and draft the ordinance", and then I would bring it out for first reading. But the first item, and the commissioner is correct, it would be your discussion amongst yourself, then instruct me, "Mr. Attorney, just go ahead and do it", and I would draft the ordinance. Then we'll come to the first reading, then there's no discussion, just a heading, and then it will go out to the second step, or the third step, that would be the reading of the ordinance along with the participation of the public.
The public hearing.
That's how I remember it. I mean, that, that was my understanding.
I'm gonna do it this way, the other day, I was really confused. I had no idea.
It's okay, but we clarified it now, so it's okay.
I don't know what was going on, I don't know if it was on first, on second, or third, so I thought to myself, "Well, I didn't know exactly where the..." because there were two ordinances. So I, I didn't know exactly where one, now if you tell me, "Okay, ordinance one, the first ordinance related to X is at step one", okay, now I know that we're, we're only discussing it. And, and then ordinance B, okay, that's at step three. Okay, that's second reading. Now I know where that's at.
I think maybe the confusion was because these, they were very similar.
A failure to communicate here, you know, but I think...
Let me repeat it again, please, so...
No, no, no.
No, we got it.
It's no misunderstanding, but please allow me. Right now, the suggestion is two separate ordinances, one has nothing to do with the other.
That is correct.
But normally, you all decided at some point that you would discuss it among yourselves, instruct me to draft the ordinance. I would bring it out on first reading, that would be second step, and it would, it would be approved, like it usually does, or disapproved, and then if approved, we would go out to the public hearing after advertising, and there will be a public hearing, people will come and talk about it, and so on and so forth, and you would all decide, and then it would become law. and you would all decide, and then it would become law. Okay?
Very, very simple. I, I'm sorry, let me clarify this. Okay, the reason I brought it up is, is very simple, okay? Let's say, I'm gonna put myself on those shoes, okay? Let's say I'm interested in that we don't have orchids in, uh, in, uh, in West Miami. So, I'm the only one, I'm discussing this with myself. Then, I bring it up to the city attorney, and I said, I want you to draft an ordinance that says that I want, I want white orchids in West Miami, okay? I'm still having that same conversation with the city attorney. City attorney is not, uh, sharing that information with anybody. He goes, and he writes that ordinance. That ordinance comes for the first time to the table, okay? We're not preview, we, 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 we read it on the agenda that is coming, and, oh, you read it, or you read it, and you said, what the heck is this? You know, but then, when it comes, it's for first reading, and you can't discuss it. So then, you're very frustrated, because how la, I, you know, Commissioner, Commissioner Blanis happens to like white orchids.
I like blue one time.
So you see what I'm saying?
He's got it now. He completely understands.
As simple as that, it's all communication.
Mr. Mayor, I, I agree with you.
He's got it, we got it, we got it.
He got it.
We got it.
What I, no, I just don't want to complicate it.
No, 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 this, this is, this is actually to make it easier.
I like your steps, I like your steps.
Beautiful.
This is to make it easier.
Phase one, phase two, and phase three.
Phase one would be...
Discussion.
The discussion.
Okay.
Okay, and if we're, and if we, and if somehow the discussion is pending further information, it's phase one, it's still at phase one.
Yes, absolutely.
That way, when I ask her, hey, where is this ordinance? She'll go, oh, phase one. Now I know it's pending. Okay, if I, uh, uh, phase two, that's first reading. Phase three is second reading. It was advertised, and it's going to second reading, and, and we have public participation. I mean, I don't know, I think, I think that makes it, to me...
What was phase four again? Was there a phase four?
We can make a phase four, yeah.
It was one, two, three.
Okay, okay, okay. It's almost nine o'clock, and today, we have the budget, okay? Listen, all right.
Mr. Mayor, on, on this issue, before you leave the, uh, the conversation or the discussion, so you can continue to ponder over this, item 11C. I did text Mr. Penna as you were discussing it, and poor guy, he's still out of town, uh, but he responded that we do have an ordinance on the books that says...
There you go.
Yes, six months expiration, as you explained, Mr. Mayor, and as I was under the understanding, from the date of the issuance of that permit.
Right.
Unless they have an inspection, it gives them another six months from date of last inspection until completion. So, every six months, basically, you can get an extension by applying for...
That's what we need to do away with.
What, what, no, 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 no.
Because then, you'll be forever, six months.
No, 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 listen, listen. It has to pass inspection. If it doesn't pass inspection, you, you, you can't, you know, so, so in other words, work has to take place.
Exactly.
Okay.
Work has to take place. You can't just call for inspection and say, okay, I call for inspection, then automatically, no. Work has to be...
Accomplished.
Has to be accomplished, and it cannot fail inspection. If it fails inspection, the permit is revoked, and they have to start from scratch. Or, or the red tag the, the job, or, or...
Is that what we have?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so then...
No, 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 but, you know, a, a, a text, a text is not sufficient.
No, no.
Let's go to the...
We will get a memo to you with a clarification.
Thank you for being...
We'll make sure.
Okay.
So, we're deferring this?
Yes.
Pending the outcome of the memo.
Right, we'll continue the discussion.
We remain on phase one on this item.
Yeah, we're not deferring, we continue the discussion.
We remain on phase one.
Yes, okay.
I like it.
Furthermore, okay, remember, when we're talking about the, this ordinance, the reason I refer to the county is because this has to do with building. Anything that has to do with building has to do with the Florida Building Code. So, it's not only Day County, it's the entire state of Florida, so it's Florida Building Code. So, that's why everybody has to go by the same code, and, and, you know, the code is written in such a way that everybody has to follow. As a matter of fact, when you go into that code, it tells you about permitting, and it tells you about all of that, okay, and the procedures. So, that's building code, okay? All right, next item?
Next item would be, Mr. Mayor, since item D has been withdrawn, item 11E, which is a discussion in reference to setting time limitation for approved special use permits for plan development to present building permit application for construction. This item was discussed at the May 16, 2018 meeting, and instructions were given to check with other municipalities. This item is sponsored by Mr. Blanis, also by Commissioner Blanis.
So, this is a phase one.
Still phase one, yes.
Phase one, it's still a phase one, because we were, did we get the information?
I'm not sure whether, Mr. Penna, I have not received a report from him yet as to what other cities do.
We had requested information to see what, what other cities were doing.
To be continued, okay.
Okay, well then...
Wait, 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 no, no, let's, okay, because I don't want to waste time. Uh, we, we want to move forward, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's request everything that we need to request, okay? Now, this one has to do with zoning, okay? When you deal with zoning, each municipality have their book, okay? So, this is not Day County, this is not, everybody has their book. If you remember, for years, we had our own zoning department, and we didn't have to go to Day County.
Correct.
So, each municipality has their own book. This is not building. Building, everybody has to go abide by the same book. This one, there's 34 municipality, and there's 34 different books, okay? So, that's why I, I ask, let's see what all the municipalities do, you know? Uh, uh, do they grant the permit for a year, two years, uh, six months? You know, I mean, how, I mean, how quickly they have to start construction? Because the way we have it right now, there's no time limit. It's totally open, and, and, but let me, let me, let me be the devil's advocate for a moment. Because we had it this way, that's why, in the beginning, we had development that came to the city, and things moved very quickly. Because some of those buildings were already, if you remember, if I remember correctly, that by the time, uh, when we had the first, um, well, not the first, but the 2005 economy drop, what was it, the, about around 2005?
2008?
No, 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 no.
No, 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 it was around 2005.
No, 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 2005, the first time that, that this collapsed. Uh, it, it was 2003, 2005, around there. Anyway, when that happened, we had five projects that already had a zoning approval for ma, for, for, for plan development. What happened was, two of those projects die, and then three remain open, okay? The one on where the Dollar Store is, that property was sold, so that one died. The one where the shopping center of Total Bank is, that was another project there, that one died, those two projects died. But then, the three other remain were the one on 67th Avenue, and I believe the one on 57th Avenue, I don't remember about the...
Correct, yes, sir, you're on the money.
So, because of that, that's, that's, you know, it helped the economy, it helped the second time around, because, you know, the, that, that was quickly moved. So that's, always think about that. But I agree. Now, the other side of the coin is, we have other projects that have not taken off, and they, they stay there, and they get dilapidated, and, and nothing happens, and, and, uh, and so on. So, therefore, um, I think we need to gather that information from other municipalities, you know, the pros and the cons, you know, on, on time limits. Because once the permit is issued, then that all the ordinance will kick in. Once they pull a building permit. But, I can tell you, from experience, the smaller project, you can get a building permit right away, but normally, when those plans come over here, in the larger buildings, sometimes it takes a full year just to produce the drawings to go to permit. And then, sometimes, derm in Day County takes six months. So, you know, be aware that, that, you know, yes, we can limit it, but we can't be unrealistic, because then, nothing will happen, you know? Uh, if we, if we do it too strict, uh, that will be the end of anybody touching any properties.
It, it's not my intention to, to make it strict, and, and to make it difficult.
That's why we need information from all the municipalities.
My, uh, my idea is, is, you know, because we do, we give a special use permit with the hope that, you know, at a future date, we're gonna have a, 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 a project, you know, that's gonna benefit the city, that's gonna give us recurring revenue for years to come. But, you know, if a builder comes in, gets a special use permit from us, and he just, you know, sits on it, gets, gets, uh, he could get all his plans, all his permits, and, well, then, then that other law will apply to him, the six months.
Once he gets a permit, the, the other law, he has to start within six months.
But, but let's just say that, you know, he buys the pro, he says, yeah, I'm gonna build this beautiful building for you guys, and, uh, and he just sits on it, changes his mon, changes his mind, sits on it, and doesn't get the permits.
No.
Then what?
In, in that case, you're, you're absolutely right.
That's my, that's my, uh...
Yeah, no, you, you're right, you're absolutely right. I'm in agreement with you.
That, that, you know, we lose, we lose recurring revenue, we, you know, the, the property can get dilapidated, it could be an eyesore, it can even be a safety issue, uh, over an extended period of time, if it's not, you know, looked after, uh...
It devaluates.
It, 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 it devaluates.
And the surrounding area as well.
You know, so, so, I, I'm all for giving them enough time, absolutely. But you, once we give a special use permit, you have to do something. You're just not gonna sit there a year, two years, three years, four years, and...
Well, I, I want to make a suggestion. This is something that, yes, perhaps, uh, you know, the building department could do this research, but I also want to throw in there that perhaps the city clerk, since you're the record keeper, and I don't want to give you more work, but since you, you know, uh, maybe you can collaborate, uh, but it is, it is part of the building, it is part of the, uh, you know, the zoning department. Uh, it should be upon, it should not be the city attorney, you know, I, I think the, the...
We could do the survey in-house, I think everybody can pitch in, I think Mercy can pitch in, uh, Juan can, can develop the, and we can develop the questions. Uh, Anari has a good group through the city clerks, uh, and see who responds, and we'll do the same with the planning and zoning board directors that Juan has a rapport with, and we can ask Cadi to put together, as she has in the past, or, or, or both of them, all the information for Mr. Penna. She will be assigned to Mr. Penna and put the survey results. Uh, I think Anari can get maybe templates or ordinances adopted by other cities, and Juan can bring also information that he receives from other zoning directors. I think it could be a, a team effort to put this together.
Okay.
So, we'll, we'll send out a, a memo on this, and, and try and get an answer, and hopefully, it'll, phase one will come back to you.
Both ordinances are phase one.
On the 15th.
Okay.
That means that we're pending on something. We discussed them, so there's still a phase one, so we, if something's pending.
Okay, sure.
See, I mean, at, at least in my mind, that makes it clear.
I like it.
Okay.
I know where it's at.
Beautiful. Next item?
Next item will be item 11G. This is a first reading. This is an ordinance of the City of West Miami, Florida, relating to vacation rentals, providing a general framework for the regulation of vacation rentals, making findings of facts requiring vacation rental registration, providing requirements for registrations, requiring inspection, specifying duties of vacation rental owners, and allowing agents, providing maximum occupancy, requiring rental agreement provisions and postings, providing for enforcement of violation and fines, and providing for severability, codification, and effective date. This item is sponsored by Vice Mayor Rodriguez. This is a first reading, no discussion.
Phase two.
Phase two. We are on phase two of these ordinance.
Mr. Attorney, uh, since there's no discussion...
Remember what we discussed, Mr. Attorney?
When?
What issue?
About, about, um...
And about what?
About adding the responsibility to the property owner to make sure that whoever attempts...
No discussion?
No discussion.
Phase two, so...
No, the, the, the thing is this, you see, we have a first reading.
Yeah.
Now, since it's first reading, it, we already discussed it, so you are, even though it's a first reading, and you cannot discuss it, you're welcome to come to the clerk's office, get a copy of the ordinance that I drafted, and you can comment the, you can read it, and you can discuss it all you want, and you can ask me all the questions you want, and we'll discuss it when the item is published on the public.
So, we can amend it?
So, you can amend it, add it, subtract it, divide it, okay, good.
At phase three.
Wait, 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 this is not, there's no...
Yes.
First reading, do we have a public hearing?
Uh, no, this is a first reading, no discussion, no public hearing.
Good. Okay, so I have a motion?
Phase two, this is a phase two.
Okay, I have a motion, I need a second, okay?
Second by, by Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Call the vote?
And Commissioner Blanis, I'll be vote. Commissioner Blanca, Vice Mayor Rodriguez, Mayor Mujina.
Yes.
For zero, item passes, and these ordinance will be advertised, and will be brought back on fa, for phase three on, uh, the August 15, 2018, Commission meeting at 7:30.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, uh, I'd like to request to be excused. Uh, the reason that I, I came tonight was that I knew that this was very important, but as you know, my wife is ill, and I have to go home, and it's, I have taken more time than I, I anticipated, so, uh...
Yes, your excuse, Mr. Attorney.
I'd like to, uh, mention that I heard that we, we have something there in the agenda, which is the next item, that the manager will advise you what the, uh, what Mr. Penna has, uh, suggested, is that correct?
In, in what, in what item?
Yes, items H and I. Uh, we would like to request that we draw these items since, at the recommendation of Mr. Penna, Chief Court Enforcement, there are pending violations at this property, and it's not, uh, Mr. Penna recommends not hearing yet a mitigation, a request by the, by the owners. So, we would like to request a, uh, the...
Withdrawal.
Or withdraw, the withdrawal of these two items from the agenda.
Okay, you need a motion or something, or...
It should be a motion, yes, sir.
Okay, I need a motion, I need a second?
Second.
All in say, or say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. I have to leave.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Granted.
Thank you, Mr. Villalobos.
Next item?
Item 11J. This is the yearly evaluation of the city clerk by mayor and city commission.
That time of the year again?
Time flies.
Time flies. Madam Clerk, how come you're not smiling?
Time flies when you're having fun.
Time flies period.[1652.42]
Let's call, let's say we're having fun.
Okay, who wants to speak first?
Well, I would like to, actually, with the clerk's permission, because I'm not sure if you all saw this, the clerk sent us an email where she was, uh, she had a write-up in the, um, the Clerks Association?
Oh, the highlights of the Florida Association of City Clerics.
So, I was, I was impressed, um, and with her, with her, you know, approval, I'd like to be able, I'd like to read this into the record. May I?
Vice Mayor, you're embarrassing me.
Well, it's, well, but this is, it's public because you sent it to us.
It is, it is.
But I, I think, I said it should be read.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, I'll give you permission.
Madam Clerk, may I?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
You have my permission.
So, uh, this is an area of this, and it is, I have been the city clerk for the City of West Miami since July 2010. I am originally from Cuba, where I completed four years of mechanical engineering at Las Vegas Central University. I came to the United States in 1993 at the age of 25. I faced many challenges learning a new language and being able to communicate. Having learned Russian when I was a teenager, this created a false pretense for me that the English language was going to be an easy ride, it was not. In 1996, I began working for the City of West Miami as a secretary to the public works and planning and zoning departments. My engineering background came in handy then. I soon realized that my passion was in public service. In 2003, when an opportunity, an opportunity presented itself, I joined the executive department as the executive assistant to the city manager. In 2010, I was appointed acting city clerk, and I immediately fell in love with the clerk's profession. With the support and encouragement from my city manager, Yolanda Aguilar, and my city commission, in 2010, I was appointed as city clerk. I immediately joined IIIMC, FACC, and MDCMCA, and started attending academies and conferences offered by the FACC, which was a true blessing, allowing me the opportunity to grow not only professionally, but also personally as well. The spirit of friendship and camaraderie the FACC promotes among our members is unparalleled. I obtained my CMC designation in 2015, and now I am a few credits away from obtaining my MMC. Locally, I have been honored to serve in the Miami-Dade Municipal Clerks Association in the capacity of secretary from 2013 to 2015, vice president from 2016 to 2017, and president from 2017 to president. On a personal note, I am the proud mother of three sons, Otto 23, Eric 21, Ivan 13, and my adoptive, adoptive girl, a cocker spaniel named Bella. She is our princess. God has truly blessed me with the best support system of family and friends. When I do get free time, I spend a lot of it at home with my family, unless I am running, reading, boating, cruising, traveling with my better half, and making my life meaningful and worthwhile. Anari Gonzalez, CMC, City Clerk, City of West Miami. I learned a lot by reading this, I did not know many of these things. I'm sure many of you did, but I was impressed, and thank you for allowing me to share this because it was, it's impressive, and, and you're to be commended and congratulated for all the things you've gone for, you know, your professional development, um, so I was impressed, I, I was...
Could have done it with your, your support, I, I mean, I've grown professionally and personally because of you, whether you believe it or not, yes, because of your support, I, I've, I've, I mean, achieved many accomplishments.
Test that on the fire.
Exactly. Thank you for allowing me to read that, um, into the record.
Thank you.
Well, I, I was previewed to a lot of that information, so I, I, I knew that, so I guess, uh, for a long time, I, I've seen our clerk growing, uh, very fast, very quickly adapting to, uh, our unique city and, and the way we do business over here, and, uh, I applaud her for that, so... Next? I'm, I'm a man of few words, and so, I'm not as elegant as, uh...
Ed, yep, well done.
She summarizes everything.
She's got you beat.
Yeah.
Comrade Gonzalez. Just kidding, uh...
Is this phase one or phase two?
We're still in phase one. Phase one, this is phase one, okay.
So, uh, Madam Clerk...
Yes?
Madam Clerk, you know, uh, she's a self-starter, a go-getter, uh, she's had to, uh, learn, uh, on, on many levels, uh, you know, how to, how to manage and navigate, uh, you know, the city clerk position, and, you know, she had, she's done an excellent job, um, hopefully now with the phase one, phase two, phase three, we can get even better. But, all in all, I, you know, she's done a terrific job, an incredible job, and I'm very satisfied with, with, uh, her, her help and, and her effort, so, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, okay, so, uh, that means that...
She passed with flying colors.
You passed on flying color, continue to serve here, uh, for, huh?
I have one more thing, and I, I'm gonna jump ahead because, um, in my, in going over the, um, the budget, it, this will come up.
Do we discuss that now?
No, 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 I'm just saying, I want to bring forward something that I, I read in the budget, and, um, very well deserved, that the, um, the city clerks, um, the city clerk's now gonna be receiving a car allowance, which has never been the case, so I think that's very well deserved as far as, um, part of her job description, that, that is something that, that should be there. So I just wanna commend the city manager for making that part of the budget and aligning that and going forward.
Thank you, and, and, if I may, I'd like to say a few words, and I know she reports to the commission, but I have the pleasure and the privilege of serving alongside with Anari, um, and responding to the commission, and I've seen Anari grow, uh, in more ways than one. I think she's become a, an integral part of our city administration. Um, Anari has developed, um, she has established relationships with all the clerks, and they feed off of each other, and that's what managers do as well. And I think your agendas, and if you look back at your agendas and your minutes and the preparation and the supporting paperwork, the level of information that you're getting from the city clerk's offices is impressive. Um, she has mastered her office, she has gone electronically where possible, as much as possible. She has, she has learned, uh, so much in the last eight years because she really stepped into that position, um, under very difficult, uh, very difficult moment in time. And so, I think that primarily over the last three or four years, she has mastered the, the job of a city clerk, and she has established awesome relationships, just, uh, in every which way, she's become a very well-rounded professional city clerk, and we are lucky to have her here, so I wanted to express that, um, aside from, from my personal feelings, uh, I think Anari's a wonderful human being, and I think that our clerk is deserving of that small token of our appreciation for the use of her personal vehicles, attending meetings that have to do with clerks and elections department. Any way you look at it, Anari is representing the city in a most professional manner, so I, I highly recommend that you entertain that in the budget.
Thank you, thank you, Yoli, for your kind words, and, and yes, I thank you, I thank you because, uh, because of you I'm here, and I really, I mean, it's an honor to work for you, and, uh, and it's a privilege, and I really appreciate the fact that you, that you really give importance to, to values and loyalty and commitment, which 22 years being with the city says something that I, I'm here to stay, you know, so, I'm committed, yes, yes, I'm committed, so thank you, and, and please, this is a request, any area that you see of improvement, which I think I have many, please let me know, I value your feedback, I value your input on things that I really need to improve, you let me know, and I'll try my best, because my interest is to be better and to serve our, our city, which I'm proud, very proud of, so, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I wanna add one more thing, uh, Madam, uh, Vice Mayor, since you brought it up, I, I also wanna bring something else. Uh, I receive a survey, uh, that also talks about salaries in other municipalities, and it compares our clerk to other municipalities, and I know we have different budgets, so that's an item that is not there, and, and different municipalities have more luxury and, and than, than, uh, and their budgets are more splendid than ours, and, and I understand all those issues. The only thing I wanna bring to, to your attention is the following, uh, that based on my observation, and, and, uh, you, you're, in terms of salary, you're on the bottom of the list, I'm, I'm, I don't...
She is.
I, I don't wanna say that, uh, because, uh, and I don't say that trying to embarrass you or embarrass anybody, but to acknowledge that, that maybe not this time, or maybe this time, this is something that I bring it to, to the attention of the people, uh, to, to, to our colleagues, uh, that, that we should contemplate the budget, or, or in the future. I mean, I know that the budget, the budget has to be balanced, and I respect the, the work that, that is put uh, by, by, uh, Mercedes Leon, by her, uh, you know, by Rita, by, by our mad manager, and I know that when you sit down and you balance the budget, that's why it's called balancing the budget, i- it's not only balancing the money, but it's also balancing, you know, how, how you compensate everybody across the board, and, and I know that, that sometimes when, when we shift that scale, you know, i- it messes up the, the balancing of the budget, and so, I just wanna make sure that, that, um, I wanna acknowledge that I received it, and, and, uh, please keep it in mind, if it's not for this budget for future years, I, I know that we have great years to come, and, um, and we can share that, so, that's, those are my thoughts, and, and I'm, I'm very pleased with your performance, I, I'm very pleased with your response, and, uh, and I see it that every year it gets better and better and better, and, um... And I like when I pick up the phone and I call you, or, or I sit down with you and I ask for information, uh, that information is well-prepared and readily av- uh, available, whereas before, it took time to gather that information, and I know it's because of the work that you have done throughout the year, trying to, uh, you know, put together all this, which is now, you know, easier, but if it wasn't for your work for many, many years, that information will not be as easy as it is right now, okay?
Of course, nothing supersedes the experience.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right?
Yes, next item?
Next item.
Yes, next item is the yearly evaluation of the city manager by mayor and city commission.
May I, may I, may I start, may I say something there, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Why in the heck are we evaluating, she's leaving in like three days? What are we evaluating? She's out of here for six months, what, why is this even, why is this even here?
It, it's...
Somebody explain this to me.
If I may explain.
Please, because I am a loss.
This is the time of year that the clerk and the manager, because of our reporting to the commission, we discuss this because this goes hand in hand with the budget preparation. What you don't wanna see yourself get into is evaluating somebody, um, or one of our positions in February, because any decision that is monetary in nature has an effect on the budget. I have, so this is here because of procedure, and it always happens at the same time during the month of July. So, I, 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 I have a reemployment agreement, so I guess that, um, I take it for, I take it that you're, you're happy with our, our performance, and maybe we could do this again next year at the same time.
Sure.
But it's here because it's procedure, and, and it belongs on this agenda.
Okay, 'cause I wasn't a loss.
Just like, uh, if I may, um, explain, the city attorney gets ratified by the commission...
After election.
After the election, the first regular city commission meeting after an election cycle. And so, his or her remuneration should be considered at that time for the following year budget.
Okay.
So we do this so that we don't go over budget.
Okay.
So there's a reason for our madness.
Okay, got it.
Madam Manager, job well done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Again and again, I mean, we have said it so many times that, uh, I mean, I just... By the way, Commissioner Black, Commissioner Black asked me for, if we could take a, a minor recess, and, uh... And I, I got the cue, so, uh, Madam Manager, uh, you staying, right? You're coming back, right?
I'm coming back, Mr. Mayor, February 1st.
Not staying, coming back.
All right, uh, anything else?
Break?
Okay, let's take a break.
Thank you.
Pero, pero, let's embarrass you a little bit. Are we taking, are we taking again the same item on the evaluation of the city manager?
No, I think the...
Done?
Pulling the meeting back to order.
Okay, we're back, uh, item, I believe, is 11...
L.
L.
Item 11L, request for consideration and request for resolution for salary supplement for the acting city manager and acting finance director for a period commencing July 31, 2018, through January 31, 2019, by city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city commission, as spoken time and time again, we have, uh, a temporary transition of, of powers and offices, and I am requesting that you consider an approval of a salary supplement for the acting city manager and the acting finance director for the period of time commencing July 31 through January 31. We are proposing an amount of $12,000 for the acting city manager, and we are proposing a $6,000 salary supplement for the finance director. As you know, both offices are of huge financial responsibility and day-to-day operations responsibility. These amounts have been included in next year's budget, I have spoken to both the incoming, uh, acting finance director, as well as the acting city manager, and they have, uh, both agreed, uh, that this salary can be paid from next year's budget so that we don't offset or require an amendment to our existing budget. So both of them would be in agreement. I believe that the amount is, is fair in, and it commensurates with the additional responsibility that they will have.
Well, since they're not here present, they can defend themselves, the, no, just kidding, no, let's, let's move forward.
Oh, no, hold, hold, I have a question, I have a question, I have a question, you know me and my questions, um, and I didn't wanna have to ask it during your manager's message, 'cause I know that's, um, it's gonna be lengthy, so I, I'm hoping now is, is the right time to ask this question, um... I, I, I understand the additional responsibilities, but, but I, I found the amount to be a little high, so I would just like to know, how did you arrive at those, at those amounts?
Well, first I had to negotiate Mr. Penna down, uh, but, seriously speaking, if we were to hire, if the city were seeking, uh, applications for a, for, from a qualified candidate for the position of city manager, the starting salary for a city manager would probably be, for a city our size and demographics and budget, would probably be in the range or the neighborhood of $125,000. I mean, that only comes because it is the highest paying office, because it's the office that has the most responsibility. So I took that, that position of a starting salary at $125,000, I took the acting city manager's tenure, knowledge, and, and commitment on the job and the years of service and, and his overall knowledge, and we came up with a prorated amount of what $125,000 of a starting salary would represent. And that's why we split the baby, we prorated it, because it is a six-month period of time, we are proposing a $12,000 increase for Mr. Penna. The same analogy, or the same methodology, as Mr. Villalobos would put it, was used. Um, we took the position of what if the city were searching for a finance director? You could not get a finance director to come work for the city for less than $75,000, $80,000. And so we have an employee who's been the assistant to the finance director here, and has been gainfully employed by the city for more than 33 years, has, um, acquired the knowledge, the skills, and she's in a position to serve as acting finance director, and believe me, it, it, it's, um, it's a very huge responsibility when you have to certify documents, audits, um, and with other municipal entities that we report to, and where you're working with other municipal partners, there's just a lot that goes with the job. It's not only preparing a budget, you're, uh, you're putting pen to paper and certifying, um, certain financial information of significant importance, you're working with the state of Florida, um, and so we've taken the position that anyone off the street would probably earn somewhere in the vicinity of, of $72,000, $75,000, $77,000 for a finance director position, given the nature of our budget size, our city size, and the demographics of the city. And as you saw this evening, the city clerk, uh, had sent you a, a salary study, and we have always been on the low end. You should look at some of what the city managers in, in local municipalities make. It's, it's, um, they're very high, and we're probably one of the lowest-paying cities, and we've had this conversation in other categories as well. Uh, but the City of West Miami has always been playing catch-up, we've always been the, behind the eight ball, and this is the second year that we're moving in the right direction, if you wanna call it that. So I felt that this salary supplement request was, was very much justifiable and in line with what entry positions would, uh, would be.
Now I understand a little bit more, um, one more question, back, back when at some point you, um, stated, Madam Manager, that, um, your volunteering for six months would, would be saving the city, the City of West Miami quite a bit of money. Does this, uh, amount that we'll be giving, and I'm speaking specifically about the acting city manager, does this amount negate that savings?
No, 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 there's still going to be a substantial amount of money and savings during the six-month period of time. Um, my new salary, um, was negotiated at $137,000... My new salary, um, was negotiated at 137,500. I'm going to be making next year approximately 80, $84,000, 82 or 84,000. There's going to be a huge savings. And the other factor is, is that I will not be participating towards the second retirement with the Florida retirement system because it's not allowed by law.
So, there's still a substantial savings.
There's still a substantial savings to the city.
And both the acting finance director and acting city manager have agreed to, to be paid this amount in the next fiscal year?
Yes.
Which means they're, they're agreeing to be paid after the fact?
That is correct. If it's approved this evening, if this recommendation is approved this evening by the commission, we have entertained these dollar amounts in the proposed, in the preliminary budget. And, um, if approved by the commission, they will be honored with that salary supplement for the period of time. It would be payable to them starting October 1st through January 31st during that period of time.
So, this should be considered like a, a bonus?
That is correct.
So, it doesn't affect-
An incentive.
It doesn't, an incentive bonus, so it doesn't affect any other, any other financials?
No. And they're still getting, these, these two individuals are still slated to get their 5% increase in the budget as they move forward to the balance of the, of the next fiscal year and returning to their normal posts.
Okay, thank you for those explanations.
And when you say normal posts, I got one more question. So, then there's solid, this is not an increase in salary?
This is an incentive for the six-month period of time. Their salary increase has been accounted for and contemplated in the preliminary budget.
So, they will revert back to your, their salary with the 5% increase?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
I have something. There is another position that is being, uh, covered by, uh, by Martin, um, the code enforcement officer.
Yes, sir.
He is becoming the, uh, director of code enforcement.
The chief code enforcement for a period of six months.
For a period of six months? Okay, so, is something being considered for that, uh, position?
Mr. Penna has not made any recommendations, um, on the subject matter, but because this is a preliminary budget, that doesn't mean that it cannot be revisited.
Because we're always talking about being fair and about being transparent and about being, you know, equal, you know, I, I think that, uh, you know, if we're going to do this for these two, uh, positions, I think that we need to do it for, for him also.
And Mr. Garcia is contemplated as well in the budget with a 5% increase, but is something you may want to consider.
This is totally different. I didn't even bring that up.
Right, the incentive.
We're not talking about that, we're talking about the incentive. Why is he not being considered?
I don't have anything, a recommendation from Mr. Penna. It may well be that once he takes over as acting city manager-
So, who, who recommended, who recommended for these two positions?
I did.
So, why didn't you recommend for, for his position?
Because right now, Mr. Garcia reports to Mr. Penna.
But you're the city manager.
Yes, sir, I am, but I need to hear input from Mr. Penna.
But he's, he's, I don't, that doesn't make any sense to me. He's under you, you're the boss.
I understand that, Commissioner Blanis and, and, but I do receive input from department directors. I mean, this budget is not only my work in progress or the finance director.
I certainly hope that, that, that this is considered.
I don't disagree with you.
Because it wouldn't be fair and it wouldn't be right and, you know, it just, I, I don't, you know.
Well, and, and the fact is, is that he works-
It doesn't look good.
And he works very hard, no question about it. And he's going to be assuming-
You're doing, you're doing, uh, something for two individuals and then you're not going to do it for a third one that's going to take up a, you know, a higher position, a higher responsibility.
But right now, let's keep in mind that Mr. Garcia does work under the jurisdiction of the public works director and chief code enforcement officer. So, the request would have to come from that department director who will step into the acting city manager. And remember, I keep repeating this, this is a preliminary budget. It is subject to change and I foresee there will be change for the tentative budget hearings.
Okay, rather than keep on, I agree, a point well, well taken, uh, I-
And we will, um-
I'm in agreement with, uh, with Commissioner Blanis.
Definitely, I will confer with Mr. Penna and, and advise him that obviously this has been mentioned and taken up at the meeting and we should be addressing it if he hasn't.
Okay. Next item? Or does that have anything else? No? Okay, next item?
Mr. Mayor, we need a motion from you on this side, on these two items.
He doesn't say anything here.
It's a request for consideration. Well, we can take it up and as part of the preliminary budget submission.
I make a motion.
Okay. Uh, I need a second.
I don't believe there's a motion required.
But that, that's what DC declares.
I mean, how do we, usually when it's, there's no motion-
No, because it's not written on the agenda, that's why we-
It's contemplated in your budget, so if you give approval to your preliminary budget, you've basically given approval to the items that have been addressed in the preliminary budget, subject to us revisiting the issue with the chief, the future chief code enforcement officer for that period of time.
So, the motion on the budget would, would incorporate that.
Okay, all right, so next item then.
Next item would be, this, this is a preliminary budget submitted for fiscal year 2018-19 by city manager with item M, submission of the preliminary city budgets for fiscal year 2018-19 by city manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city commission members. I'll try to be as brief as possible, but this is perhaps the most important document that you get to approve on a yearly basis and have input in. And I want to first and foremost thank every member of the commission, the mayor and the commissioners for meeting, uh, with our office and the finance director and Mr. Penna during the budget process and for having the patience, uh, that you displayed during our, our, um, presentation of the preliminary budget. In accordance with the provision of the charter, we hereby submit the preliminary budgets for all funds for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2018 through September 30th, 2019. The preliminary budget and its message is intended to walk you through the budget as providing you with detailed information which is evidenced by your line items in the budget and/or any significant information that we consider critical to the budget process. We've given you a calendar as part of the exhibit and prior to that, you have agreed to pave the way to hold your tentative budget hearing on Tuesday, September 4th, 2018 at 7:30 PM for the tentative budget and Wednesday, September 19th, 2018 at 7:30 PM for the final budget hearing. The reason these dates have been selected is to comply with the state of Florida Department of Revenue and TRIM Division, which is truth in millage. And these, um, these regulations are very strict on the fact that our public hearings have to be, uh, must be on different dates than those held by the Board of County Commissioners and the Miami-Dade County Public School System. As such, we have been, uh, staying in touch with their calendar or keeping up with their calendars to make sure that ours do not conflict with any of those two entities. The, um, the city has three days after tonight to submit our tentative millage rate or our proposed millage rates to Miami-Dade County and to the state of Florida electronically and with, uh, copies of your, um, forthcoming resolutions on the agenda. The property appraiser provides us with assessed values. First, we get a report on June 1st every year, which is an estimate of how the, their, their office views our city is doing in terms of new construction, demolitions, sales and surrounding area and how, how that market affects us. Our present millage rate is 6.8858, one mill of that is dedicated to the city of West Miami Recreation Center as prescribed by ordinance 133. And what we budget based on the law is 95% of expected and projected revenues to the general fund and the one mill to the recreation center. Under the present assessed value and schedule provided by Miami-Dade County Office of Property Appraiser, using our present millage rate, each mill has a value of $522,566 to the city of West Miami based on that 95% formula that we use, which reflects this year an overall 15% over last year in increased, um, property tax and real estate and personal property, uh, real estate income. Our growth, like I mentioned, is partially the impact of development within the commercial corridors, sales, uh, both in homes and/or, um, the commercial area and the, the market in the surrounding area, how that affects us. A total of 244 senior citizens who claim the additional homestead exemption qualify for the, uh, additional exemption. As such, we lose $12 million of assessed values from the rolls resulting in probably over $82,000 of loss of revenue to the city. The Department of Revenue has provided us with a formula on how to compute the rollback rate, um, to include the per capita Florida personal income and how we will arrive at the millage rate, how much money we will derive of, on 6.8858, which we are proposing to keep flat. We have provided you with exemption, um, homestead exempted properties. We've given you several scenarios under what it means under our save our home programs and non-homestead property increases and assessed values trigger increase in property taxes, even if our millage rate stays the same. So, um, it, it, um, if the millage rate is approved tonight at 6.8858, we will still be forced by the law to publish a notice of tax increase as governed by the truth in millage guidelines for the state. We've introduced a colored chart broken down in detail that gives us a breakdown of where our taxes go. There's additional copies on the rail here for the public. This includes all the taxes paid to the school board, the South Florida Water Management District, the Children's Trust, the city of West Miami, our Everglades, Find and Okeechobee. Of all the real estate and property taxes collected, paid by the property owners, collected by the tax collector's office, our millage represents 30%, meaning two-thirds of our tax dollars go to all the above-mentioned governing agencies whose millage rates are affected, uh, by our property tax bills. So, this is, this is very important. People seem to have an impression out there that all the taxes that they pay to Miami-Dade County come back to the city of West Miami and that could not be further from the truth. We've taken several precautions with revising our revenues accounts coming from the state, the county and local revenues, compare them with our six-month actual receipts so that we can arrive at a sound projection in income over the various categories. And we have concluded that the total preliminary general fund budget, including those variations, will be, uh, are in the amount of $7,535,476 or a 17% increase over the 2017-2018 budget. We have made significant progress with realizing much-needed real estate and property taxes for this coming year. And on the general fund, uh, we've highlighted some of the unfunded mandates and large-ticket items that we always watch and monitor carefully. Your FICA taxes provide for pay increases and wage commitments, so our FICA taxes will be affected by wage increases that we're giving to employees if approved. Our retirement liability contributions for senior staff, um, level employees to the ICMA. Your regular FRS and law enforcement FRS contributions for city employees, which is an unfunded mandate, which are, uh, whose rates are based on mandatory contribution and the rates are established by their governing board. We have no control over that. The next ticket item that we watch and carefully monitor is your medical and life insurance for all insured personnel, which is pending an August renewal after the actuary report is conducted, uh, by the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. Although we have budgeted carefully, um, budgeted 8% increase over and above what we're paying at this time for the medical premiums. Our general liability policy has been funded, um, also it is pending renewal from the Florida Municipal Insurance Trust. These two numbers are probably going to be submitted to us somewhere between the 1st and the 15th of August, as soon as their actuarials are done. We've included a, a cost for the November 18 ballot questions and related, uh, center expenses. The city clerk has requested a proposal from Miami-Dade County and I believe the proposal came in at 4,400 for the cost of the actual questions that we have on the ballot. I believe the clerk has submitted, uh, some of that ballot information to you already. Uh, we are going to have some maintenance expenses as a, as a, um, at the, at the, um, in this line item and they're directly related to maintenance expenses and overtime for employees who have to open at 6:00 AM, close after the, uh, closing of the polls and the maintenance crew that has to come in and preserve the integrity of every election equipment that's in that room, uh, for early voting. So, uh, that has a, a price tag and we've included that in the, um, in the budget. We have increased the transfer to the city of West Miami Community Center from, uh, by an amount of $74,000 over and above the 2017-2018 budget. We've had to augment staff, part-time staff in the kitchen because we can no longer rely on volunteers. The program by the Alliance for Aging has gotten very strict in terms of compliance. There has to be fingerprinting, there has to be background checks on, uh, people that are working at the community center. Those, uh, employees, um, don't make a whole lot of money, but they're mostly senior citizens who are supplementing their retirement income by accepting three or four hours a year. We hired a full-time bus driver for the community center, um, in recent weeks and so, we have also pay increases and the, again, a, a department that, um, that costs a lot of money to the city because you are providing a very important service. It should be noted that we not only serve the city of West Miami residents, that I would say more than the majority of the people who attend the community center do not reside in the city of West Miami. But because we receive state money, we have to open up the program to area participants from District 6 and stay within our service boundaries for both the congregate and the home-delivered meals. The more clients we sign up, the more money that the center needs to operate. We have classes because if you don't have the, the classes and the recreational events, then you don't get seniors to come and participate. And the goal of the program is to have a well-rounded program for our senior citizens, both on a congregate, um, at a, at a congregate level and the home-delivered meal, um, as well. So, uh, the, the transfer is 74,000 over and above last year's. This year, we have the loan payment to City National Bank for the public services and phase one and phase two, meaning phase one is the office building that was built in phase one and phase two is the motor pool area. We have a 10-year loan to City National Bank. Am I correct, Mrs. Leon? We have a 10-year loan that this would be payment number three, so we're already three years into the loan. We also account for the, um, we've budgeted the, um, interest payments for the credit line as previously reported on the FEMA loan. We hope to God that we're able to resolve the issue and it won't take a year to be able to pay off this credit line. However, your budget contemplates the interest payments on the loan. We've transferred money out to the sanitation enterprise funds and the building enterprise fund, which have, um, operating deficits. Now, I could sit here and ask you to consider increasing the deficit on, in the sanitation enterprise fund, but the problem is, is that fund fluctuates every year, not because people are not paying, but the needs are different. Very soon, we're going to probably be looking at, uh, equipment costs, more, uh, another garbage truck, because by the time you're done paying for one truck, you have to actually start looking, uh, at, at having that as a backup truck and bringing a new, a, a new truck. So, I think that with the additional tax dollars being paid by residents, new developments, sale of properties and the income that the city is receiving in general fund, I'm saying that the general fund- I'm saying that the general fund, and I'm reporting to you that it is a little bit healthier and that we're able to pick up the slack for these other smaller funds. Um we look at this on a year-to-year basis. We cannot forecast five years uh five-year uh planning because we don't know what the needs are going to be five years out. So we are not uh proposing any increase increase to the sanitation department. Um you have a an ordinance that is scheduled to come before you during the month of August, if I'm correct, Madam Clerk, on the building permits. If if uh if some of the fees are modified, uh then we've already contemplated for some of those uh fees in the um in the building enterprise fund. So we're taking into account all of the considerations, um increases versus transferring, increases uh uh or not increases. And I say this is not a year where you should be increasing uh budgets. We have an issue, which I will address under a separate cover, which is your potable water system, and we've been talking about this for years. So I think that what needs to be decided on is what are the priorities? Where are we going to focus and where we're going to put our money? Um that said, we have included pay increases for city employees in all divisions with applicable benefits that apply under their pay scale. The pay scale was approved during last budget year, the wage plan for all city employees. That's that wage plan contemplates a cost-of-life increase, which was valued at two-point-eight percent under the United States Department of Labor this year, and two-point-two percent as a merit increase. Obviously, your CPI changes from year to year, so you want to als- always incentivize your employees by providing them not only a cost-of-life increase, but a small merit increase along the way. The police department is governed by a collective bargaining agreement, and they have a four percent built in to this year's agreement, and that has been contemplated as well. We've given you copies of our independent auditor's report and uh so that you can browse through the main areas of concern. Um and you could use that report as you're ready, reference so that you can cross-reference and use that as a guide for this year's budget preparation. Um again, the the um the city is very mindful of its workers' compensation insurance and general liability and property um and and property coverage and the rising trends, general general rising trends in the insurance industry. So we gotta stay focused on the actuary reports. We need to remind ourselves that this is a preliminary budget, and it is expected that some changes will occur as we get closer to our tentative and then final budget hearing. Changes usually occur before that first tentative budget hearing, and that is scheduled for September fourth. Our budget addresses the delivery of efficient city services in all category, and our goal is to fulfill the mandates given to us by the mayor and city commission members in terms of service and projects. Grants play a significant role in many of our budget categories because we're leveraging impact fee monies that are transferred into the respective funds and expensed out in applicable areas of the budget, and they're used as match towards the dollars that we're getting from entities to fund projects. And so you're going to see that in your general fund, you have an expectation of receiving eight hundred thousand dollars over and above what your real budget number should show, because impact fee dollars go to impact fee accounts set aside for general services, police, parks, and sewers. So while we show it as revenue, it is it they go to a dedicated revenue account or or a cash account where they sit there, and they're used for capital improvement projects as determined by this commission and as leveraged by our grant applications. Um we have also provided you with an exhibit of all the details of all the grants applied for by the city uh through the use of our grant writer, along with a memo published by the Office of the Manager detailing impact fees as of May thirtieth, twenty-eighteen. Um in that impact fee detail, we've provided you in highlight of what has been um what has been the um what has been already pledged towards future grants or things that are grants that are in the pipeline. So look at that report. That report is available to you since the inception of the impact fee account, and I want to go back to two thousand and nine as the inception date. It has a category that Mrs. Leon keeps for every impact fee fund of all payments made to the contractor. So if you have any questions, please ask. We're here to answer and and respond to those. Um it should be noted that while we are enjoying new monies in real estate and property taxes, we're also addressing and rebuilding reserves and watching closely what the November election um constitutional amendment that has um a component for a provision where an additional twenty-five thousand dollars of additional homestead exemption will be offered to property owners who um who have homestead properties. This amendment, if it's passed by the voters, will decrease, moving forward, our real estate and property taxes for the year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty. So we need to be prepared for that. And I believe that we've done a good job building reserves to address those those uh um that constitutional amendment, and I I firmly believe that this proposal will pass. The um I've broken down the general fund. The city commission has no major or significant changes to the commission other than minor upgrades to the microphone system used here in chambers, and that's something that Mr. Quintana is working on a proposal. The executive office contemplates a salary for the city manager based on her time served after a six-month sabbatical as required by the Florida retirement system. So the manager will see will receive eight months of compensation instead of twelve months in the new fiscal year. Finance administration, the same thing applies. The finance director comes back at the same time. Due to her brief separation with the city, the salary for for the finance director will be calculated on the eight months versus the twelve months. We've contemplated an increase for six thousand dollars for Rita Rodriguez, who assumes the acting finance director position payable between the period of October first and January thirty-first. Legal services, the city attorney who serves under the sole jurisdiction of the mayor and city commission has been um has been approved to receive a pay increase at five percent, which he was approved in his recent contract. The five percent was incorporated into the budget proposal. Martin Garcia will be serving as the chief code enforcement officer for six months during Mr. Penna's assignment, and we will come back to you after addressing this issue on uh at the tentative budget meeting. And this is being done because there is a an attorney general's opinion about dual office holding, and we want to make sure that we never get in trouble. So Mr. uh Penna will be relinquishing his chief code enforcement position uh to Mr. Garcia for the same period of time. Facilities and maintenance, there are no significant changes to the facilities and maintenance division with the exception of the stipulated pay increases and applicable benefits to those individuals assigned to this division. The police department by far takes the largest percentage of the city's budget due to the nature of the service that they provide and the risk that comes with wearing a uniform and a badge. Wages are governed by contractual obligations with the Police Benevolent Association and have been contemplated in the budget. The benefits increase because when the salaries increase, the fringes increase as well. Um their insurance costs play play a major um cost to the department. Um as some may suspect, the police department administration uh is top-heavy, but we must understand that the organization is run as a paramilitary structure, structure and equally like other cities, this department is usually fifty percent of the municipal budget. In other cities, that percentage is larger. And I think Commissioner Blanis, you can testify to that. You were a first responder for many years, and you know how these um these municipal budgets operate. So the chief has proposed the funding of two entry-level positions for police officers. One is to replace the resignation of Officer Rosario, who left us to go with the county and venture on to bigger and better things, and another vacancy that is being proposed. Why is it being proposed? We have more people living in the city. There is a national standard that I believe has a a number of two-point-seven officers per thousand residents is the national, that is the average number uh of the na- what the national standard requires. So the vacancy is being proposed uh as a result of developments, which we knew would bring new residents and so that we maintain the same level of service that was in effect prior to new development. Further, the chief is proposing to fill the vacancy left in the part-time position that will enable us to always have four part-time officers that are capable and ready to fill voids at times where we have expected vacations for full-time officers covering sick leave or any type of event and or emergency. Dispatchers have been included in the pay increase schedule at five percent, covering all their shifts twenty-four-seven. Software for the specialized police computer needs will increase, and we have budgeted for those increases. Some of those costs were previously funded by equitable sharing. Equitable sharing is the account where we deposit the monies that come from drug seizures from the officer that we have detached to a federal task force. However, we've shifted some of those costs back to the general fund to keep equitable sharing from depleting its resources when the general fund appears to be a bit healthier. For years, we have paid a police officer um for in the absence of that officer assigned to that federal task force, which generates money for the equitable uh fund. Because the fund is depleting, not terribly bad, but it is depleting, this year we felt that that one officer that replaces off the officer assigned to the task force should be funded by the general funds of the city. We are allowing equitable sharing to build up its reserves because in the future you will see before you a plan to uh to actually that will give rise to the expansion of the police department, and that will be presented to you in upcoming meetings. So equitable sharing and impact fees will play a major role in the future enhancements of the police department. So one thing, and not a criticism, Chief, uh but this is the nature of the business. The police department takes a hundred percent of all real estate and personal personal property tax revenues that come to the city, to the general fund of the city. The city operates with all the other revenue sources. So keep that in mind. It's it's a very it's it's costly. That's the bottom line. The Streets Division contemplates staffing to include a vacancy from the twenty-seventeen twenty-eighteen city budget. We still have one vacancy which we'd like to fill. Um but the we had two this year, and one was filled approximately thirty days ago. We budgeted another vacancy that we need to ful- to fulfill the demands of the department, and we are budgeting an entry-level position to stay within the structure of the approved pay pay plan. Um we have had difficulty in receiving applications. It's not only yes, we have um we have brought up the issue in the past that we don't don't pay enough, but we will need to reassess the pay plan and perhaps bring in an entry-level position at step two instead of step one. It should be noted that people that apply for these types of public works positions, sometimes some of these folks do not meet the cut because they have problems with their background and have a criminal past, and so they're not recommended for employment. So we have to be very careful and bring only the best to serve our citizens. Um there's a one-time allocation for the proposed acting city manager, as previously discussed under the agenda item, uh for the amount of twelve thousand dollars that has been considered in the Streets Division um with the acting city manager responsibility. The Garage Division proposes an overall decrease due to the fact that the bulk of the expenses in connection with the new mechanical garage was contemplated last year's, this year's budget that ends September thirtieth. And that big-ticket item back there was the lifts, the mechanical lifts for the motor pool area, which the money came from impact fees. The Parks Division within the general fund contemplates an expenditure of approximately a hundred and twenty thousand dollars coming in from impact fees for parking improvements to both Garden Club Park and Cooper Park, and a ranch-style fencing made out of treated wood to protect Cooper Park from vehicles coming into the park and as a safety measure for the children. The fence will serve also as a decorative piece that will enhance the overall look to Cooper Park. This expense coming directly from park impact fees if the concept and the budget is approved. Sanitation Enterprise Fund, we briefly touched upon it. We're transferring fifty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars to cover its deficit. Its deficit has risen to eighty-nine thousand dollars in the coming year as projected. And so the sanitation fund, who had small reserves, will be depleting a hundred percent of its reserves and will require a transfer from general fund to cover this um to to present a balanced budget. Waste disposal and recycling costs have an approximate cost of three hundred thousand dollars. This is a this department costs the city approximately six hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars to operate. If my memory doesn't fail me, we can go to it, but i- in excess of six hundred thousand dollars. Three hundred of those is goes to the county. Before we leave the general fund, we are pleased to announce that by uh that on February two thousand and nineteen, the city will pay the U.S. Century Bank loan, which we know as Sewer Phase One, in full, finally, after all these years. All departments who are charged a portion of that debt show the last payment under an eight-hundred account. So that was the first phase of the sewer. And for the record, that loan was in the amount of four-point-three million dollars with an additional hundred and eighty thousand dollars added to that, so almost a four-point-five million-dollar loan that was um acquired by the city through a loan from the Department of Environmental Protection many years ago, and I want to go back to the eighties on that. And um we refinanced that loan with U.S. Century Bank so that we can um so that we could pay it off quicker. And we are. The Surtax Transit and Transportation Fund includes its, as we know, it's the half-cent penny tax. A hundred percent of PTP projects are devoted to transit and transportation revenues, and those revenues are supplied by the county. So we are expecting their renewal numbers by August twenty-eighteen. We've used um the revenue projections based on the six-month receipts. We budgeted a transfer from general funds to address the final audit finding by the CITT Trust that addresses the money that they deem the general fund owed to the half-cent penny tax. That amount is one thousand tw- uh I'm sorry, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars that the city has to transfer from general fund to close out this audit and move on. So that means that after September thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen, the general fund will be relieving from um having to pay the PTP monies owed to it. Additionally, the PTP will provide for another round of a hundred thousand dollars under this proposal worth of sidewalk improvements to add to the already encumbered two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which is part of Phase One. We continue with Phase One, Phase Two, and Phase Three. Um we've employed two hundred and twenty thousand dollars towards Phase One of the approved sidewalk repairs. Those dollars have and will continue to address lifted, broken slabs that will ultimately reduce liability and provide a huge service to city residents who have requested sidewalk repairs for many years. We received numerous compliments on the sidewalk. We received numerous compliments on the sidewalk project by city residents, as I am sure you all have. The expenses that we obligate basically through our budget allocations have to be approved by Miami-Dade County, by the Office of CITT. In addition to those projects, we are expecting the grant for the traffic study. Its inclusion in the city budget will be incorporated once we have an inter-local agreement executed. The reason why the cost of the traffic study is not there is because we don't have an executed agreement in hand and I don't like to present something that I don't have and we have no assurance until we have an executed agreement. But I suspect that we will have something and a change in your budget at the September fourth tentative budget hearing. We are in communication with Mr. Guerra's office from TPO and I think you have received copies of emails which we have forwarded to you on this subject matter. And I don't believe that the inter-local agreement with Miami-Dade County Public Works Department will have such an important role after all in our being able to secure the $40,000. So, I think we're moving closer and closer to executing this agreement. The Building Enterprise Fund, we've already touched upon the department who is struggling to meet its expenses. It should be noted that this department is a true service to the residents who were in convenience in the past by having to obtain permits by going to Miami-Dade County and at times waiting six, seven months to get a building permit. Bringing this department to the city has alleviated and encouraged residents to apply for permits rather than start work without a permit just because the county took so long in processing permits. This said, and when we met individually with each commissioner, the city had anticipated a greater shortfall from what we are projecting at this time. We were looking at something like $53,000 as a shortfall. However, some permit fees came in, some collections came in from one of the developments on 67th Avenue. And it looks like if we take into account the two permits in the pipeline or the two developments in the pipeline along Southwest Eighth Street and 63rd Avenue, that we're, that shortfall has been reduced to an amount of $14,000, which we propose transferring from general fund and that will absorb all of the reserves that that fund had. And in addition to that, we're subsidizing it with general fund money. So, we will also see if the permit fees, if the ordinance that will be presented to the City Commission on second reading, if that passes, it should contemplate additional monies, but we can't count on something that we don't have in hand. So, we don't know if that ordinance will pass or not. So, one of the most important things that we can't lose sight of is the fact that that fund operates with thirty percent of the revenues received from those who apply for building permits. The building official, meaning TY Lin, receives seventy percent of all permit fees collected by the city. They have plans review process, they have inspectors for the different disciplines, they have re-inspection processes when these inspections fail. And so, they take seventy percent of all revenues coming in from permit fees. The software in connection with the building department has a cost of approximately $20,000 a year. So, it's an expensive proposition, but a very user-friendly proposition and it's really a great service to the city, to the residents. The Water Department Enterprise Fund does not contemplate any increases in user fees. The city has not increased user fees for over ten years. We recognize that we have a very serious problem with our water system, the potable water system. The system is over seventy years old and we're simply putting Band-Aids by fixing areas where leaks and lines burst, but this does not remedy the situation. The city needs to be forward thinkers because there will come a time where the Band-Aid approach will no longer work or be a solution to the problem. While it is unpopular, the city needs to put a good plan forward to address the replacement of the service lines, which we believe has an estimated cost of approximately $6 million at today's prices. Our job is to inform and report and recommend solutions that have a lifelong impact to today's and tomorrow's budgets. We suspect that we're losing to the ground $65,000 to $80,000 in water losses. That's huge for our budget. In addition, we are spending anywhere from $60,000 to $70,000 a year in repairs to the system and employee and equipment man-hours to include approximately $50,000 in overtime expenses to address emergencies as they come up. Those emergencies seem to be more and more present as the system continues to age. The mayor and city commissioners have all been diligent for years in trying to secure funding to start the replacement program. However, it appears that the answer consistently is this is a local issue and not a statewide or a federal issue. While we in part disagree with that, the fact is, is that no capital funding has been earmarked for our city by any other outside agencies. The budget proposes an amount of $112,000 from its own reserves to cover the water deficit, which should leave us still with approximately a $300,000 reserve in the Water Enterprise Fund, give or take. And that is all predicated on usage and what we pay to the county. It should be noted that in this fund, we should anticipate paying Miami-Dade County $500,000 for the bulk water purchases. And this is based on what we have paid as of the six months ending March thirtieth, 2018. It should be further noted that we're proposing that the Water Department not pay rent to the general fund for this coming year. It'll help the Water Department replenish its losses a little bit. We have included funds for materials and overtime in connection with the water system repairs. However, this item is totally unpredictable due to the circumstances as described above. We go to the Recreation Center. John Michael is here this evening and Megan, the Rec Center is alive and well, and for that, we thank you. We allocate one mill of property tax proceeds to the fund as a year-round operation at the Rec Center. The ninety-five percent millet rate this coming year is based on the assessed values and has a total value to the Rec of $522,566. All possibilities in terms of events, activities, and programs have been included in the budget in all categories for all committees as requested by the mayor and city commissioners. The Recreation proposes to add another $77,000 to its reserves after all activities are funded to the level of expectation. There are a couple of large-ticket items that need to be contemplated in the Recreation Center Enterprise Fund for next fiscal year. And that is an expense of $204,000. A hundred and four of it is, contemplates a grant for the Recreation Center by the LWCF, which is an agency of FERDA, for the resurfacing, for the outfield renovations at the Recreation Center, the resurfacing of our basketball courts, our wind screens, and the outfield lights and poles. So, the $204,000 are expensed out and a hundred and four is coming in from grant proceeds. We have allocated an amount of $50,000 for the replacement of the aged and leaking roof over the pavilion structure. This would also come from park impact fees. We've shown the money coming in as a revenue and being expensed out of your capital improvement accounts in the Recreation Center. An allocation of $150,000 has been budgeted for the replacement of the basketball and tennis courts, lights, and poles. These items are to be funded by park impact fees. We have also added a back-to-school event moving forward for the next fiscal year for city residents at the request of the Education Committee for school supplies and backpack giveaway for the new fiscal year. That concludes your Recreation Center. The Community Center budget, and I asked Marilyn Mariah to leave because she's recovering from a recent surgery and I didn't feel the need for her to stay here too long. The Community Center has increased due to the needs as previously explained to you and in our quest to provide our senior citizens with quality-of-life services. The general fund is prepared and we have budgeted a transfer of a total of $174,000 from general funds to assist in covering expenses over and above the allocation that we receive from LSP, OAA, NSIP dollars. These three contracts are administered by the Alliance for Aging and we get money from these three categories. LSP stands for Local Service Provider, OAA stands for Older American Act Money, and NSIP is Nutritional Supplement Incentive Program, which we get money from the Department of Agriculture from that. In the past, we've been able to rely on volunteers through agencies, but we can no longer rely on these agencies because our staffing needs are critical and they're critical to the operation, the maintenance and the compliance of the Alliance for Aging. We have filled the position, a vacancy, a driver position, and we have filled two part-time positions in the kitchen to replace volunteers that we can no longer rely on. The Community Center will also use up 11,000 of unrestricted reserves to balance their budget. The next enterprise fund would be your Sewer Phase One and Sewer Phase Two. Phase One of the sewer system is doing better due to the fact that the commercial redevelopment is generating more user fees, thus increasing our expectations on the revenue side. While Phase Two is struggling, Phase One will be sharing some of the unrestricted fund balances to help Phase Two. From an auditing standpoint, the sewers involve other implications. They, we separate them, the sewers, for a budget planning process, but our auditors combine the utilities from an auditing perspective. The large-ticket items, aside from paying Miami-Dade County Water and Sewer Authority deals with a mandate as required by the federal sewer-related consent decree. That includes the funding that's necessary for the testing of the sewer lines and rebuilding our sewer stations, which is primarily being funded by sewer impact fees and not by user fees. The Stormwater Utility has had a running expected cash deficit of $85,000, but the fund is audited and has a huge surplus due to the infrastructure. So, we, this is a, an enterprise fund that is supposed to stay sufficient, maintain its own operations, but the auditors show because of the worth of the infrastructure as if we had an $11 million surplus. But we maintain an $85,000 to $90,000 cash deficit on a yearly basis. In closing, it should be noted that our city has accomplished so much in the last four years, as evidenced by a separate report that we will generate before July thirtieth in terms of projects. All of what is being done has a huge impact on the city, service, and the quality of life standards that you have all directed for us to pursue. And for that, I thank you as a resident. Looking forward to the next six months and into the new budget cycle, I know that the city is moving forward in the right direction. It will be led by Mr. Penna until I return, and the city could not be in better hands as I've said time and time again. I wish Mr. Penna publicly, our acting city manager, and our new acting finance director, Rita Rodriguez, all the best in their continued budget process and endeavors. Mrs. Leon and I will be your volunteers and make ourselves available for questions and information. I wish the mayor and the city commission Godspeed, abundant blessings, and much health. May the new fiscal year continue one of prosperity to all city residents and family members and for us, for all those who labor for the greater good of our city. To all our city department directors, city employees, I thank you for your collaboration throughout the years and for walking the extra mile. You've made my job easier. For those who have the fortune of working with our city, you are by far a part of an elite group of people. You are appreciated and your service to the residents is second to none. Keep up the good work and continue making the city of West Miami great. And respectfully submitted. That concludes my report.
All right. Excellent.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you guide us through the process unless you have any, does anybody have any comments, any suggestions at this time?
Just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank the city manager for giving this very important document, which is our city budget, the respect and the time that it duly deserves in reading her entire message to us for the record.
Ditto. I'm sorry, I'm a little tired today. Okay. Thank you, Madam Manager, really appreciate it. And also, Mrs. Leon for putting this together. I know it took a lot of hours and I know you're going to put more hours as volunteer now.
Yes, yes. And Mrs. Leon has done an exceptional job, as always.
Okay. Now, Madam Clerk, can you guide us through the process?
Yes. Next item is item 11N, Resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida Establishing the 2018 Tentative Millet Rates Upon All Real and Personal Property Within the City Limits for the Payment of the Amounts Appropriated in the 2018-19 Preliminary Budget by Mayor and City Commission.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Commissioner Blanis. How do you vote? Commissioner Blanca. Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Mujinha.
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Next item.
Next item is item 11O. This is a resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida Adopting the 2018-19 Preliminary Budget by Mayor and City Commission.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Commissioner Blanis.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Mujinha.
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Next item.
Next item is item 11P, Resolution of the City of West Miami, Florida Adopting the Preliminary Water Enterprise Fund Budget for the Year 2018-19 in the Sum of $868,014 by Mayor and City Commission.
Need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, call the vote.
Commissioner Blanis.
Yes.
Commissioner Blanca. Vice Mayor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Mujinha.
Yes.
Four zero, item passes.
Go to the order. I need a motion to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good night.